Okay, it is 5:30. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Would you please all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just as long. Thank you. Before we get started, I need to ask for a motion to excuse Mica and London. They both will not be joining us this evening.
Motion is noted.
I'll second.
Perfect. Questions or comments? I'll call for the roll call vote, please.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Ms. Senvik?
Yes.
Mr. Mayberry?
Yes.
And Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Next on our agenda is special recognition. We have certificated employees. Dr. Pierce.
Okay, yeah, this is the exciting week every year where we get the opportunity to recognize all of our certificated staff here in the district. It's known widely as Teacher Appreciation Week, and we have teachers and other certificated staff members who have designated weeks during the month of May, or other weeks, principals and school nurses, librarians, counselors. And so while we like to also individually recognize groups, we collectively recognize our certificated staff during this important week every year in May. There's a short little video I'd like to share that was put together by our communications department, and it's available on our Facebook page, social media. But I wanted to spend just a minute showing it here, and I hope the sound works. It's thinking. I think I clicked it too many times. It's loading a lot. Just to narrow it down to one. Okay, here we go.
What I like about our school counselor is that she can interact with kids and help them out.
She is so nice, and she helps us when she needs it.
She makes me laugh a lot.
She's always pushed me to be the best I could be, and is always nice to me.
I like my librarian because she's kind and helps me find my books I want.
She's nice to me, and like, I love learning from her.
Makes me laugh, and she's funny.
Um, our counselors are really awesome because like, when you have an issue, they'll listen.
Encouraging and create a fun class environment.
Awesome, funny, and helpful.
Helpful, caring, and funny.
Kind, thoughtful, and caring.
Inspiring, kind, and nice.
Intriguing, awesome, funny, and entertaining.
Fun, spirited, and encouraging.
Thank you.
Gracias, mi amor.
Thank you.
Thank you!
Thank you.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Muchas gracias!
Thank you.
Thank you.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right now. Back to the PowerPoint here. So, yeah, you know, in addition to the school-based activities as a district, we like to recognize our staff as well. We do a cake delivery every year out to schools and try to make them feel special and appreciated as they are this week. So I'd like to take just a minute to read a portion of the Presidential Proclamation for Teacher Appreciation Week, which again, we celebrate as Certificated Staff Appreciation Week here in KSD. It says, "In schools across America, teachers are arriving early to set up classrooms, spending long hours educating students, and staying late to prepare tomorrow's lesson plans. Their devotion to our children embodies the best of America, ready to serve and eager to see others thrive. Today and during this week, we celebrate our nation's remarkable teachers and early childhood educators, and we recommit to having their backs just as they have ours. In the words of the First Lady, 'A lifelong educator, teaching is a calling, a way to live out the belief that we can shape our corner of the world one student at a time.' But shaping that world demands a lot. Teaching happens inside and outside the classroom. It often includes spending extra time coaching teams, supporting student clubs, and helping kids catch up when they have fallen behind. It means giving young children the foundational skills for success during a critical period of their development. When Jill and I hosted the 2023 National Teacher of the Year Ceremony at the White House, we were deeply inspired again by the dedication, creativity, and loving strength of our nation's educators. Now therefore, I, Joseph R. Biden Jr., President of the United States of America, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the Constitution and the laws of the United States, do hereby proclaim May 9, 2023, as National Teacher Appreciation Day, and May 7 through May 13, 2023, as National Teacher Appreciation Week. I call upon all Americans to recognize the hard work and dedication of our nation's teachers and to observe this day and this week by supporting teachers through appropriate activities, events, and programs. So I just want to say a big thank you to our certificated staff, and if we could give them a round of applause tonight, it would be awesome. Just want to point out, we do have some certificated staff members, including administrators and counselors and teachers here in the audience tonight. If you're a certificated staff member here in KSD, could you stand up, please? Don't be shy. I know who you are. Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you very much. Okay, next on our agenda is communications from parents, staff, and district residents. Little disclaimer here before we get too far. The Board appreciates hearing from parents, staff, and district residents. At our regular Board Business Meetings, the Board of Directors provides an opportunity for communications from parents, staff, and district residents. This time is reserved during our working meeting for the Board to listen to comments, input, and information. The Board does not respond to comments, provided as our goal is to listen and to learn. As appropriate, the Board will ask the superintendent and her staff to look into any issues raised. Please note, it is all important for it is important for all community members to feel welcome and safe during the Board's business meeting. During the public comment period, please refrain from any positive or negative expressions, such as clapping or booing, in response to a person who is providing public comment. If any audience member has any concerns about how they're being treated by another attendee, please contact a cabinet member to report the issue. The Board does not take public comments on issues related to personnel or individually named staff members at Board meetings. However, you can email the Board with any such comments. Okay, our first speaker this evening will be JoJo Davis. You haven't seen JoJo in a while.
Yes. I've been watching online. It's one of my favorite things to do. Tonight, I come to you with two topics. I'm going to do my best to stay in our two minutes. But the first, I want to just publicly say how much I support Casey Gant. He has no idea that I'm here, but I worked with Casey for 10 years in Mapton. I know him as a teacher. We combined leadership activities and athletics all the time. Casey was always someone I and the students could count on. I'm married to an administrator, and I know firsthand how difficult the job they have. So much pressure, responsibility, and very little joy and celebration, only criticism. We did not only do Desert Hills a disservice, but we also did Casey a disservice by not standing on the mountaintop and saying how much we support his leadership on a day-to-day basis. This leads me to point number two. Our district got $1.4 million extra for support of counseling, safety, all of those. And if tonight is a night that all of us can pay attention to the data that you're going to see, we have proof that the middle schools are still struggling. We're suffering at the hand of misunderstanding, misappropriation of staff and resources, and a school system which continues to turn a blind eye to middle school needs. As the public was outraged at a PEP assembly, we had four middle school students attack and beat up a fifth grader on the way home from school. Nothing, crickets. That shouldn't shock anybody when you're looking at the data that is again going to be shown tonight. District-wide discipline. You look at the discipline, the behavior violation, those students were excluded in sixth something, eighth grade. It's on page 91. Sixth something, eighth grade far surpasses any other grade. In fact, eighth grade doubles the next grade closest to it. You look at attendance. You look at page 72, 74, and 77. Middle school kids do not feel safe. They do not feel known. They do not feel valued. And yet, when you look at the high school, all of the support the high school has, I heard this week, I hope it's not true, but the high schools are getting an additional high school counselor. Why? I just asked the Board and the district, stop turning a blind eye to the needs of the middle school and give us what those kids deserve and need. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Nick Nelson.
Can you hear me online? Does it work okay? So thank you, Board members, for your effort working through the boundary change requirement. However, there are several critical flaws with the approach taken today. The lack of a robust approach toward boundary scenario proposals is clearly exemplified by the introduction of Scenario 5 less than a month prior to Board recommendation and subsequent community meetings. This suggests that a Scenario 6 will be better than all the other proposed scenarios if the Board is able to deliberate again. Moreover, Scenario N is ultimately the best, yet has not been proposed. So the problem with the boundary scenario approach is the lack of an objective measure for ranking scenarios. The Board has relied on the limited capacity of the human brain to hold multiple facts and measures simultaneously in order to arrive at a decision that affects hundreds of community members. It is advisable for the Board to first clearly outline the objectives of the boundary changes, state why these are necessary objectives, develop a point system for these objectives that capture the relative importance of each objective, and then apply the optimization function from three to the end number of proposed scenarios. In other words, the boundary scenario is an optimization problem, and the Board should be using optimization functions and not relying on qualitative descriptors of good and better. The following applies both to the past and the approach that I just outlined. So the Board must also ensure that the metrics used are well-defined metrics. For instance, the capacity of each school is a primary descriptor for the boundary scenarios, but the Board has chosen to define it ambiguously. This makes it incredibly difficult to understand how the boundary changes maximize the objectives of the boundary proposals. For example, Scenario 5 puts four schools over 100% capacity, which would seem to make it a nonstarter. Finally, pushing through Scenario 5 at the last minute, which was mainly driven by two members of the Board that may or may not have special interests, is a really bad look for the Kennewick School District. I understand the Board members are busy, and I do not want to push more work onto them, but surely they can do better than this. I recommend that the Board request a three- to six-month extension for the recommendation deadline to develop a more objective framework for the boundary decision. I also apologize for such a late recommendation, but I was unaffected by the proposals until eight days ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Aaron Derrick.
I just wanted to speak on the Desert Hills Middle School Assembly, specifically the licking competition. And I know it's been beaten by the mainstream media, and everyone knows about it now. People in Florida, up in Canada, down in Mexico. It's kind of an embarrassing thing to be known for. And I just hope it's being taken seriously. And you need to think. An idea like that doesn't come from a healthy mind. That was perverse. And whoever's idea that was needs to be reprimanded severely because that shows children are not safe around certain staff members. I won't give names, but I would hate to have a kid in an environment like that. It's disgraceful. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Kat Espinda. Thank you.
We made the map in Kennewick for the licking competition. It floors me that this happened in our city. We've had a lot of talk about the children and what's been going on with the whole trans community, children being subjected to lies to their eyes. They're being told that a man is a woman. They're being told that a woman is a man, and that's not true. Biologically, there's no truth in that at all. And for the people who think that's true, they've been lied to severely. I don't even blame them for it because everybody tells us that's true, the government, our medical system, the education system. But she mentioned Casey Gant to support him. I'm sorry, but he was in the background videoing in front of the entire world to see. And I just have to wonder if people realize that this is going to go viral. So I heard that the kids, half of the kids didn't even want to do this competition, and they had to go back out and find children or students, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, 12, 13, and 14-year-olds, to lick glass. That was paid for, by the way, by Esser Funds. That was taken by the Kennewick School District, $58 million. What a waste of money and time. And what are we, we couldn't like, take the egg with the spoon or throw water balloons? Or we couldn't, I don't know, catch the ball? They came up the worst possible thing they could think of, a licking competition between adults and students? The children were screaming uncontrollably that it was so gross. Who thought this was a good idea? And it amazes me, any parents think that's a good idea? This was okay? So I'm here to stand up for the children. They are not being protected. We need to protect our children. And I know you guys can't control everything that goes on. And from what I understand, you didn't know about it. And that's fine. But Casey Gant, what's on his phone? What's on his laptop? What's on his internet history? He was in the back laughing and filming. So I am calling for, thank you, I'm calling for the resignation or termination of Casey Gant. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Yeah, that's fine. Come on, we've got time. Linda Stevenson will be our next guest.
Thank you, yes. I got here a little late. I had no intention of speaking, but I would prefer to have the public comments end on a positive note. I have nothing prepared. However, I would like to compliment the KSD students on their performance over the last two weekends at the state-level Mathis Cool competitions, which were held in Moses Lake, Moses Lake High School. Two weekends ago, oh gosh, April 29th, it's literally all a blur to me at this point. Desert Hills Middle School was the only KSD team to compete. They won second place in the Phi Division. There are four divisions. Phi is second to the top. For them to win second place in the state is a huge accomplishment. So congratulations to Desert Hills, those students, and their coach, Heather Janos. I always pronounce her last name wrong. And just this past weekend, Vista Elementary and Cottonwood Elementary were up at the fourth, fifth Masters Competition for Mathis Cool. Cottonwood won first place in the state in the E Division. It was amazing. I am so blown away. And as always, I hope that we can get more KSD teams competing next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone online that wants to speak this evening? Iran Broden? No, no, all right, perfect, all right. Have a comment. Wonderful, thank you. Okay, number five, consent items. Can I get a motion to approve these consent items?
I move to approve consent items as written.
I second.
All right, first second. Any questions or comments? If not, I will call for the roll call vote, please.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Mr. Van, or Ms. Senvik?
Yes.
Mr. Mayberry?
Yes.
And Mr. Connors?
Yes. Perfect, thank you. Next up is the superintendent and a board member reports. Dr. Pierce.
Okay, well, a couple things to share. Just a reminder that we've got our applications due for student school board representative and representative-elect. Those are due May 15. And so we sent out another communication to families and students today and talked about it with the superintendent Student Advisory Council today as well. And then we'll ask high school principals to do some more announcements and so forth. So hopefully, we'll get a good pool of applicants to choose from. And I know so far, Mr. Galbraith has indicated that he wants to participate in the interview process. So I just need to know which Board members want to participate in the interview process. And once the applications are due, and we know how many we have, then we'll get that set up. So let me know if you're thinking about that. Thank you.
I knew that was coming. I was just trying to lead it along.
Dr. Pierce, this is Diane. I'd do it too, please.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Senvik.
Is there going to be a problem with the three of us?
Let me double-check on that. We might just have to post it as like a board meeting if we've got three board members present. So I'll verify with the three of you and nail it down. Okay, okay. Okay, well, I think we can make it work. All right. The other thing I wanted to share in the superintendent Student Advisory Council today, given that London's not able to be here, I thought I'd give her update as well. And so in the past, we've waited until September to identify new members for the group. But this year, we're identifying incoming members in the spring so we can help them transition to the group because we've got people, we've got seniors who graduate from the group, and then new students who come on to replace the juniors who are now taking the senior spots, if that makes sense. So typically, we identify the new students in the fall, and it takes a little bit of time just to get the group, you know, connected and comfortable talking together and so forth, and identifying topics that they want to talk about. So this year, we're doing it in the spring, and we had a great meeting today. The group that we have is just amazing, group of student leaders. And they came up with a bunch of different kinds of activities, icebreaker kinds of things, to help the new students feel comfortable and understand what the group is all about in terms of sharing their opinions and letting us know what's going well and what they want us to improve when it comes to schools in our district. So we'll get that new group identified here in the spring. And it's just a, like I said, an amazing group of student leaders. And then the last thing I just wanted to touch on, and I know Ms. Senvik is as well, so I won't say too much, and then I can fill in any blanks. And when Vic does his presentation, he's going to touch on some of the legislative updates, too. So we do have, you know, highlights in terms of what came out of the legislature this session that affect public schools, a lot of funding things in terms of special education funding and transportation funding, regionalization, all those kind of things. So I won't say too much. Vic will touch on some of it. And then if there's anything else that Ms. Senvik doesn't share, I can fill in some blanks.
Wonderful.
Okay.
Thank you. Gabe, do you have any thing you'd like to share this evening?
Yeah, just real quick. I went to Vista a couple weeks back and got to watch the orchestra perform, which was amazing. I stopped by Family Friday at Ridgeview, and I was also invited and stopped by Legacy's Spring Celebration this last week. So just out and about, trying to attend some events.
Wonderful, thank you. Diane?
So I'm going to quickly give you a few points from the, as my legislative hat on. But I would direct you, if you want to read all of them, to go to the WASDA in-session of 4/28, and that will give you all of the bills. You can look at all the bills, or you can clear it out to just be special education. And you can look under Marissa Rathbone's slideshow for that. But some quick ones would be $2.9 billion in new state funding for K-12, continued funding for additional nurses, counselors, and social workers, $500 million added to special education, access to free meals for K-4. The governor signed that today. High school students may earn up to two additional elective credits through paid work experience, more security for student records when there are requests for records. Running Start will be funded for those students during summer. Let's see, universal screening for high-cap students honor before second grade, and then again, honor before sixth grade. Additional graduation pathway options for completing a performance-based learning experience. Revizes high school and beyond planned to a common online platform, which will make it much easier for everybody. Increase of sped access costs. Multipliers were also increased, and the cap went from 3.5% to 15% for the number of students. Dr. Pierce, I'm still somewhat confused about the transition to kindergarten from our transitional kindergarten, but that is happening. And if you think you need to say more about that, please feel free. And then, where else did I go? So WASDA, Ledge Rep Network, two of those, ESD WASDA Equity Training, Getting to Know KSD. All of the board members were there and got to share with the community. I was at Washington Elementary for their family bingo night, Cascade for their Be a Learner night, Key Connections monthly meeting, Ledge Rep monthly network meeting, TRITech for the high school and beyond night. And I have to tell you, this is so cool. Four of our students were offered jobs at Boeing that night. And I don't know if they are going to take those jobs or not, but those kids are going from high school to work at Boeing. So that's pretty impressive. I was at the KSD State Auditor's Exit Interview and Racial Equity and Social Justice Monthly Meeting and the LULAC Monthly Meeting last night. That is all.
Wonderful, thank you.
I was at District 10 Regional Meeting. And just want to say, have a, I guess, a shout-out for Cheney High School. They lost a student in a terrific manner. And that we should have them in our prayers, too. Really, really traumatic. Just think of others when, I'm going to get on my soapbox just a little bit here, guys. When you're thinking the role is really, really terrible. For some people, it can get worse. And it got worse for a family in Cheney. If you don't know what I'm talking about, I don't want to tell you here, but do some history, do some checking of the news, and your heart will sink just a little bit, and it should. And let it sink. Because there's some rough things that could happen to families, and it did. So keep them in your prayers or however you wish the best for other people. And if you need to talk to me about it, I'll take you after with that. I don't wanna see it.
Perfect, thank you. I'm not gonna follow that up, so we're gonna move along. Okay, did you wanna chime in here with what Diane was saying?
Oh, I do. Sorry. Let me end on an upbeat note. The others aren't here. The others aren't here, but we only have a couple of what, a month? June to get those books read for our homework assignment from, I always say Shauna, last name wrong. Carrasco? Is that how you say your last name?
Thank you, Carrasco.
Carrasco. Okay, I did my homework, Shauna, and I'm challenging my board members. For you that don't know, we were given a job assignment, a homework assignment to read books. And our passport is due to be turned in next month. I hope they're good as I am, because I heard Shauna leaving.
Well, I know you're beating me, so that's, you're, you're good there.
Sorry.
So, thank you. The only things I wanted to add. So Ms. Sunvik mentioned transitional kindergarten. Right now, we have two transitional kindergarten classes, one at Washington and one in Amistad. And this is the program that allows us to provide some kind of jumpstart kindergarten for students who would benefit from additional time, you know, before kindergarten actually starts. So that was talked about quite a bit in this legislative session. And they're now calling it Transition to Kindergarten. And we need to dig into all of the details of what this change means. It sounds like we will still be able to operate our program. There won't be any change next year. The changes come into place the following year. So we have a little bit of time to actually dig into what do the legislative changes mean in terms of program and funding and prepare to implement for those changes the following year. The other thing I just wanted to mention, when it comes to statewide funding for education, a lot of what is, you know, being shared is that there was a statewide $2.9 billion increase for education. It's important to note that $2.6 billion of that is for maintenance level effort. That's to be able to continue to maintain the programs and things that are currently in place across the state. So it's not new, new funding on top of. But of course, costs rise every year in, whether it's fuel or electricity or staffing or whatever. And so a big chunk of that money is for continuing maintenance level efforts. And, and some of the money is the one-time re-appropriated federal funding, that ESER funding. So kind of what that's gonna look like moving forward into the future once that those federal dollars expire is to be determined. So it's just important when the dollars and numbers are kind of thrown around after the legislative session that we dig into the detail to know how, what it actually means for public education in the state.
A politician might have oversold what it was. I can't imagine. Perfect, perfect, perfect. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next up, reports and discussions. We have the K-12 Student Goal Report. Mr. Scott. I see Mr. Phillips moving. You coming, you coming up here too? Just, all right, I'm just checking.
So yeah, Mr. Phillips has the limited number of board meetings left before he retires. And I felt it was only just that he get to present as many of them as he can. So he's gonna join me for sharing some of the information. So yes, we're here to talk with you, as we do each year, about our student goal report. And as you well know, we have three student goals, but one of those goals is that students are safe, known, and valued. And so this is really a report on those performance indicators and the way that we measure our, our progress towards those goals. So we're gonna be discussing our performance indicators for students reporting that they feel safe, included and welcomed at school. And we're gonna be reporting on our students who regularly attend school and the percentages. And we're gonna be talking about our district-wide discipline rates as well. So we had our spring annual survey, the student survey that we just recently completed. So we're gonna talk a little bit about those results. Wanted to note that we did have 9,433 responses out of our roughly, you know, 19,000 or so students. But it was 437 more than last year, so. Oh, Adam, I'm sorry. Thank you, Dr. Pierce. Grades three, three through 12. So it's not 19,000 students. Sorry about that. Student attendance data, we're gonna talk about, and discipline data. And then we're gonna talk a little bit about our objectives and our strategic plan around continuous improvement. So as we've done in past years, we wanted to just talk a little bit about the questions. Our questions are reviewed annually after we give the survey, primarily through principal feedback. And what we're really interested in knowing with that is how did students react to the questions? Did they understand what we were trying to, what we were trying to ask? Were there any things that we could do to word the questions a little bit differently? Those updates are then approved at cabinet level. And then the survey, once it is developed, is linked, is provided a link, and we push that out to students. Students are given an opportunity during class time in grades three through 12 to do the survey. And various schools do it in various different ways in terms of how they schedule that. But we give them time during the day to do that. When we're looking at our questions, we had 23 last year. We narrowed it down to 22 this year. And Rob will talk a little bit about how those questions are grouped. But we didn't change very many of them. If there's a star next to the question, what that indicates is that we would ask students to provide us more information due to the way they would respond to that question. So if they, for example, on question number two, "I wish I were at a different school." If a student responded that they agree or strongly agree with that statement, we would want to know more about that. Why, why do you answer that way? And so we do offer, not on all of them, but on several of them, opportunities for students to tell us more. Question number 12 has been one that's kind of been concerning to us over the last couple of years. Principals report that students are really confused by this question. Some students feel very strongly that it's great to be different and they would value that. Some students maybe think also in, you know, the negative, which is I think how we were wanting to ask the question. You know, if you feel really different, that means that maybe there's an indicator that you don't belong at school. And so what we're finding is the principals are reporting, students really didn't know how to answer that question. So we just eliminated it altogether. We felt there were other questions in the survey that would help us. And then we also, if you recall back, we've asked questions in what we kind of termed as a reversed manner. And we took some of those questions from another survey. And that survey tabulates its, the responses in such a way that those, those reverse questions are weighted within it. Well, we don't tabulate our survey results that way. And we were finding it was just kind of confusing for people. You know, sometimes you really wanted to have strong agree responses. And these ones were really strong agree responses to the negative. And we just decided, let's ask the questions, but let's keep them all very consistent in terms of, you know, kind of that positive light. So these are the changes we made that are outlined and read there, so you can see how we did that. So changing number 16 from "it's hard for people like me to be accepted at my school" to "people like me are accepted at my school", and just putting it in a little bit different verbiage that way. So those were the very minor changes that we made to our survey results. And I'm gonna invite Rob to talk a little bit about them at each of those grade bands.
Okay, good evening. So, so like Matt said, students in grades three through 12 take this survey. And so when they, when they take that survey, they're, they're either choosing, like, like Matt said, a strongly agree, agree, disagree, or strongly disagree. And so when you see these percentages here, what we did was we combined the strongly agree and the agree to come up with those percentages. All the questions that Matt showed you are grouped into one of three buckets. Either the safe bucket, the known bucket, or the valued bucket. And we'll, we'll, we'll look at each one of those by level, elementary, middle, and then high school. And so you can see on, on this chart here, this, this table. It's like that first one, I can really be myself at this school. So it gives you last year's percentage for third grade and then this year's percentage for third grade. And it does that same thing for fourth, does the same thing for fifth, and the same thing with middle, with middle and high school. So you can look on here, "I feel safe riding the bus." We saw really good growth in riding the bus, which is, to me, it's a big deal. Because in elementary, that's always been a really low area. And I think a lot of the reason it's a low area is because students don't, they, when they think of not feeling safe on the bus, as we've talked to students, they think it means, oh, I'm not, I'm not wearing a seatbelt, and so that's unsafe. And so it's really good to see that our students are feeling more safe on the bus. This is middle, the middle school portion of the safe questions. And so you can see that, like, they also, in middle school, they saw some growth there on riding the bus. And also that one below it there, in your opinion, is there unsafe behavior that happens at your school? So the answer we're looking for, of course, would be no. There is no unsafe behavior at our school. And so they saw good growth on, on that question. In the high school, of course, not a lot of high school students ride a bus. But for those that do ride the bus, they did see growth in, in 12th grade. And then for the other grades, the other grades, it's, it's pretty close to what it was last year. And a lot of the cells are pretty close, either a couple of points above or a couple of points below where it was last year. You can see it for high school. It says, "I feel safe on school grounds, fields, and playgrounds before, during, and after school." So that would be an area maybe of focus for high school next year is, is across, across the high school. It looks like that's a lower area this year than it was the year before. So those are the safe questions. The known questions. So that first one there, "I wish I were at a different school," that is, that is still worded sort of like a reverse question. And so those percentages look very low. And really, we would want students to answer, like, strongly disagree. We don't want them to wish that they were at a different school. And then you can look across there, all of the other comparisons from last year and this year, they're all pretty close in all of those other, those other statements. In middle school, "I wish I ran a different school." They saw good growth in all of those from last year to this year. And then in high school, in high school, they're, most of the cells are pretty close this year, as they were the year before. There is an area down near the bottom that says, "Students and staff know I can do good work." It looks like that it dropped off a little bit across the high school grade levels. So those are the known. And then the next, of course, would be valued. Elementary, so like, that, starting with the second one, "People like me are accepted at the school." There's, there was really good growth from that question all the way down to where it says, "I feel I belong at my school." It was really good growth for elementary. I'm really, really happy about that. For middle school, they also saw good growth in like, where it says, "People like me are accepted at the school." Also, "I feel I belong at my school." And that the rest of them are pretty close to what they were the year before. For high school, there was a bit of a drop off on that first one. Other students at my school like, like me the way that I am. But if you look down where it says, "I feel I belong at my school," they saw a good growth all the way across, from ninth grade through, through 12th grade. So those are the safe, known, and valued percentages for all three levels. Before I move on, are there any questions on any of those, Mr. Mabry?
I do have a question. Your third graders, some of those, this is their first year in school, right? In the classroom, on the school bus?
Third grade?
Due to, yeah, due to COVID, this is their first year or their second.
They would, well, they would have ridden the bus. Last year, as second graders, they would have ridden the bus, like, in hybrid. And then when we came back in April full time, they would have ridden the bus.
So not, not to discredit this, it's almost as if we should have an asterisk and we should suddenly keep an eye on it next year. And, and, I've been to safe, Rob, but I should have called you while it was up there and I apologize for that. But there seems to be a drop off on this safety. Am I reading that wrong?
Like overall safety?
Well, I'm looking at, "I feel safe on school grounds, fields, playgrounds before, during, and after school."
Yes, you select third grade, there was a drop off of three percentage points. One percentage point with fourth grade, three percentage points. I mean, they were close, but yes, there was a slight drop off on each of those.
Any, any concern? Because we put a little emphasis on this now, right? We were hoping to.
Every year.
Right, so any, anything we have to do different to show, to show increase?
Yeah, so I don't know if Mr. Scott's going to tackle this piece. But, but, so all principals have the data. They have all the raw data. And then their task between now and August is to pour through that data. They'll probably do it, like the principal, the sister principal at elementary, they'll pour through that data, they'll take a look at it. They'll kind of, they'll find areas where, like, maybe that area right there, it's like, it's not a huge drop off, but it's a drop off. "I'm feeling safe out on the grounds." So then they will write goals, not, not on every single one, because it would just be a lot of goals. But then they'll write goals on the ones that they feel like they really need to make an impact on.
And to give credit, it did increase the feeling safe on the bus. And I know we've emphasized that quite a bit.
Yes, definitely. And it's, it's a, it's a, you know, the bus is tough, you know, for a school, because the bus, you know, we don't have teachers on the bus. And so it's hard to affect that, that, that change as a school. It's more of a system thing. It's, the school's working with transportation to make that happen.
So don't, please don't get me wrong with my questions. You've done a good job. And I know that it's hard to turn the ship around that fast. But some of the questions, I'm thinking on the third grade level. You know, I was a little slow, so third grade, I'm thinking answering those questions. I don't know. It seems, are the questions the same for a third grader as it is for a high school?
Yes. There are a couple of questions that are asked of, for sure, high school, maybe middle school, but they're, they're not really, like, safe and valued. They're more about getting, getting into courses that they wanted to get into and stuff like that. But, but pretty much are the same questions.
Maybe you could talk for just a minute about the, you know, process that elementary schools use to share the, help, help students understand the questions and answer the questions?
So we do talk in principal meetings about, not only what, you know, when they get the data, when they receive that from me, what they do with it. But we also talk about, so what does that look like in your building when students take, take the survey? What most, if not all, schools do is they don't, and what we don't want them to do is to say, okay, third grade class, click on the link, answer the questions, pull out a book when you're done. We, really, what happens, I can't guarantee it's every single school, every single classroom. But typically, there's an adult that's reading those questions to them one at a time. That happens in a lot of cases, just to kind of keep them on track. And if a student has a question on, "I don't understand what, I, I feel like I belong at my school," then they can answer that. But what we don't want them to do is to just leave them to their own devices to just figure it out.
Okay, okay. I guess I can't leave it alone totally. Because I put myself in that seat and I'm thinking, I don't wanna ask a question with another student sitting beside me. I don't wanna be that open with my thoughts. Is there any, is there any way that the kids could have the option of answering it with a counselor individually? Or do we need it to, do we need to go in that much detail? Because I know you're just trying to get some data to respond to.
What I've seen is, in classrooms, the teacher would, would give some examples of like, what this means. And so they'd read the question and kind of explain it a little bit and then give the kids time to answer it. And they kind of individually go around to see. So if, you know, it, it's more where the student doesn't have to raise their hand necessarily and say, "I don't understand" in front of the whole class, where there's some kind of monitoring of, and those classes are typically small enough at the third grade level that the teacher can kind of do that. But, but I think we can always ask principals for feedback on the process every year to see, are there things that we could do to help them make sure, what's their sense of? And what are teachers reporting in terms of our youngest kids? Are they really understanding the questions? So I, I think you're asking good questions. And it helps us think about what we need to be sure we're asking principals. Because the data is on, the data is good if it's accurate. And, and so that's why we want to make sure we're getting accurate data.
Reflective, truly reflective.
Right.
And also, remember that I am answering those questions as the elementary guy. I honestly can't speak to it. I I honestly can't speak to what middle and high do. My guess is, it's only a guess, that in high school, because they're 16, 17, 18, that they don't need that much support.
And that's why my question was addressed to the third graders. They would probably have more of an issue interpreting what we're trying to get out of those questions than a high school.
And so they do get support in the classroom.
I have I have a question.
Yeah, Gabe.
Are are the intentions of the questions to be, in my opinion, they're they they seem very vague and open for basically interpretation for for anyone to answer. For instance, I wish I were at a different school. Well, I wish I was at a different school because my neighbor across the street who I play with every day goes to one school and I go I go to another because I go to daycare on the other side of town. So, yeah, I wish I was at a different school. Well, that 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 seems to be a little more, I don't know, a little different than, you know, I I feel like I'm being bullied at school or I I don't have any, I don't know. It seems like these questions are very vague and 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 open for interpretation that could give us a wide variety of of data. Unsafe behavior, like third through fifth graders, like what's unsafe? Like what like what are we telling them is unsafe? Are they are they saying, yeah, it's unsafe because little Johnny runs too fast in the football game? Like, it just seems like they're very vague and just way too many options.
Sorry. The unsafe behavior, if the student answers, yes, there's unsafe behavior, then it will ask them, so what is that unsafe behavior? Is it, are they verbal acts? Are they physical acts? Are they are they inappropriate acts on electronic devices?
Can you go back to the list of of questions? Because it shows what those are there on the survey, what you're saying, just so people can see it.
So you can see their question, question number seven. What is the unsafe behavior? And so there are those, there are those three that a student would know if they're physical acts, verbal acts, or inappropriate acts on electronic devices. And then it does ask them, you know, if they if they click on other, then they can input what some of those other things might be.
So question six, just to to reiterate what Rob is saying, if a student answers yes, then it prompts them to say, what what is that unsafe behavior? Gives them some options to choose from and gives them an open box to enter. So so Gabe, the the questions are not intended to be to be vague in general. And so, but we do review them every year and get, you know, input from the board and input from principals. So these are really good questions and there's an opportunity for us to refine questions for next year's survey if we think that we're either getting bad data or kids aren't understanding the questions or they're too vague.
Yeah, I I'm just thinking maybe some guidelines to help teachers who are helping students with with the questions like, do all the third grade teachers have guidelines that they're able to give examples for these questions to their students? Or is every individual third grade teacher answering their students' questions in class based to their knowledge? I just think maybe we can look, maybe we should look into some guidelines to answer these questions if students say, what do you mean by I can really be myself at school? Maybe we have some guidelines for the teachers to say, these are examples of what the question is versus leaving it up to each teacher to define that question.
Yeah, I just wanted to add to a couple of things that Robert said, Gabe, that we we agree that a some sort of a consistent Procter type of a document would be great because it would lend for that more consistency. And that was something that we had had some discussion about as we started seeing results from this year's survey. The other piece was, remember that, and I don't think it was reflected necessarily on the on the grid that showed the results. But like that question, I wish I were at a different school. One of the things we've added to those types of questions is to tell us more. What we saw this year in the results was that students seemed to struggle with what to put there. So the results that I was looking at said there were a lot of like no's. So that is something we want to take a look at for next year and how we can ferret out the the student answers to those questions, because you're absolutely right. There could be reasons why a student wants to be at a different school that are not necessarily related to something that the school could improve. It's that, you know, like you said, they want to go to the school their cousin goes to or or something like that. So we really want, and I think that Procter guide could help with that, to help students understand like what it means by tell us more about your answer, because it seemed to be a struggle for some of the students particularly. But as I looked at the results, there were, we weren't getting a lot of those examples or rationale for why they answered the question the way they did, which is what our intent was in asking the additional.
Thanks.
What what's the possibility or probability of, what's the chances of coming up with some questions for age group, third grade and sixth grade? Then another set of questions for sixth through eighth grade, and then another set of questions for the high schools. I I don't want to say that these aren't age appropriate, but if you ask me, again, I'm using myself, as a third grader, do adults respect me? I would honestly not know exactly what you meant by an adult respecting a third grader. Whereas in high school, you ask me that question, yeah, they take my opinion, they ask me how I'm doing. So that respect comes out a little clearer as you get older. But that's just an example. Even the safety thing, if if someone's standing beside me all the time, I don't know if that consider that safe or not in trouble as a third grader.
Right. So I think that, I mean, again, within doing some of that Procter work is is really important. And I think it's also important, you know, we do, we do ask our principals at each of the levels, like, I mean, and and I don't want this to be taken the wrong way, our principals are pretty keen on not wanting to have data that reflects poorly on their schools. So when they see like, hey, a student really doesn't understand this. And I think that it that happened a lot with with riding the bus early on. It's like, okay, so how do we help them understand what we're really asking? So I I think that's a, you know, we certainly can entertain that notion with our principals. We haven't received that feedback necessarily that they think that those questions should be differentiated for the levels. But we can certainly ask and we can certainly, you know, kind of approach it in that way. Because I do, I do understand your point in in terms of what does that mean to a nine year old versus a 17 year old? And that may be different completely. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Please.
Okay.
To get back to where I was. So so this slide. Okay, so this slide shows a summary. I mean, we it it would be tough to summarize all of those questions into just one number. And so we we selected those six statements that students responded to. And then in combining those, you know, it's a, so it's a percentage of students reporting that they feel safe, included and welcome at school on on this survey. And so that 84%, that represents the overall third through 12th grade. Those six questions all combined. You can see that it's one percentage point lower than it it was last year, just by one.
Rob, I have a question. I'm sorry, it wasn't fast enough. Can you disaggregate that into grade levels or at least elementary, middle and high? Because I think there might, as Ron was talking about, there might be real differences there.
Yes, we could do that.
If possible, I'd like to see that, please.
Sure.
Thanks.
So one thing we didn't mention at the beginning is that the the school specific data is included in the appendix to the presentation. We weren't going to spend time in the formal presentation of that. So Diane, if you look, it's not disaggregated by grade level on there, but it is by school. So you can see it by school in those slides at the end.
I did see that by school, but I'd like to see it by a grade by levels.
Yeah, and we can certainly do that.
Yeah, we'll get that to you. We'll get that to the board.
So Mr. Scott said we talked a little bit about attendance data. OSPI defines regular attendance, quote unquote, as having on average less than two absences per month, doesn't matter if they're excused or unexcused. An absence is defined as missing more than half a school day. And then this measure includes students that were enrolled for at least 90 days at at a given school. So if a student wasn't there for at least 90 days, then that wouldn't count for against the school. Our district, our district wide attendance data for last school year, it's last school year. We don't have it for this year because we're, this year hasn't been completed yet. But for last year, it it was 75.8%, almost 76%. And you can see on this slide, the trend data on the, over on the right, it has that 75.8%. And then, but you can see that that is, it's lower than it has been in previous years. Mr. Scott and I talked about this, actually, I think a couple of times, about why that might be. And I not to always fall back on COVID, because that's sometimes a weak excuse. But I think COVID had something to do with that. We, you know, during the 20, 2021, 2022 school year, we're still doing, you know, a lot of testing, there was a lot of quarantining of students. Athletes were being tested and quarantined if they tested positive. We really believe that at least part of that is is because of that. However, and so so we're hoping, if that's true, we're hoping then that next year, when somebody gives this report, that that number would go back up to where to where it was. And and really, whether it's COVID or not, schools, the schools are going to need to take a look at that to see what else can we do? And not just schools, but as a district, as a system, what else can we do to improve the attendance trend?
The other thing just to point out is that 1920 data is also artificially inflated because all of the rules around attendance taking during the 1920 school year were vastly different than than they are now. So it's just, it's, it, once we have a three year post-COVID trend, like last year, this year, and next year, we'll be able to to better determine, you know, where we are. But it's just, it's, so it's what Rob said, plus the artificial inflation from 1920.
Mike, I have a question.
Go ahead, Diane.
Rob, I I'm not sure if I heard you at the beginning. Did you say that you don't have data as to what the absences were? Like, you know, were they for illness? Were they for sports, et cetera? You know, there are many different reasons that students are absent. If we could know specifically, we might be able to work a little bit better on that.
So when the state defines it, they 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 really don't add any detail to that. It just says whether they're excused or unexcused for whatever reason. The attendance, the the percentage is based upon on average, less than two absences per month, but it doesn't delineate what the what the reasons could be or should be for calling it an absence.
And do we not have that information on our own or do we have to get it from OSPI?
So we would know, like, like a given school, like, say, Sagecrest would, they would be able to, they, we could figure out, so with Sagecrest, this is how many.
Right.
Like, like, here's the percentage of how many of those absences were excused or unexcused. But I don't know, like, like, I don't, they couldn't, well, they could dig out, I suppose, all of, you know, all of the notes and emails and so forth to determine so that excused absence, was that because they went to the doctor? Was it because they were ill? So I don't know.
At the high school level, those are notated as to what it is. Correct?
At the high school, I'm not sure.
They used to be. That's why I'm asking if it's still that way.
Yeah, no, I think in terms of the attendance data in Power School, there are different attendance codes that can be selected. We haven't disaggregated the information based on those attendance codes. Primarily, I think, again, because they they tend to be a little bit inconsistent in terms of, you know, people's understanding. So we look at excused and unexcused absences primarily. Sports related absences aren't counted as an absence, so they're not figured in there. But it, unexcused and excused absences are really where we work from. And and so certainly, if if that's something that we want to be paying some attention to in the future, we can certainly, you know, do that. Again, it hasn't been how we've reported it to the state and it hasn't been how the state has reported it out on a report card. So we kind of focus on on those things as well.
Okay, I just wonder if it might make it easier for us to be a little more pinpoint on on how to use our resources or or, you know, the people to make calls, work with families, whatever it might be, if we were very specifically knowledgeable about the whys. So thanks.
Sure. Please.
So this shows the attendance data by grade. And you can see, when there's a lot of, a lot of numbers are, they're not really big, but but basically, almost every single grade level last year was, their percentage was lower than it was the year before than the 2020, 21. The there are a couple of grades, third and fourth grade, they both went up, not by a bunch. But they but they did go up. All the others were down.
Would would we be different in 2021 for by grade? Were we still in hybrid then?
In 20, 2021, 2022, we were, we were full on every day, all day. In the 2020, 2021 school year, that was, so like in elementary, we were remote until later in October. And then we went to hybrid, we were in hybrid until like April 21st or something like that. Secondary was a little bit, they're a little, they didn't go to hybrid as quickly as elementary did. But I think we all came back full on at the at the same time.
So it seems to me that the 1920 and 2021 years are just throwing us for a loop because of the with COVID, the way we were taking attendance, the hybrid, all this stuff, so our numbers are skewed.
That's what I, that's what.
Okay. So I guess going forward, you know, having a, you know, so we've got a five year trend here, which is obviously not going the correct way. But, you know, I I wondered what it looked like if I took it, you know, went back the previous five years. You know, I, yeah, I mean, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out, because obviously this is not what I want to see. But again, but we've got these outliers and these, you know, two years of exceptions that throw our numbers off.
It's hard to compare them with the previous.
It's hard to compare with the previous years. And Rob, please, we're we're gonna, you'll be up there for three hours.
So this one is by race and ethnicity. And so race and ethnicity, really the only one that went up, and it was just by hair, was that first one, the American Indian Alaska data. The rest of them, they went down as they did by by rhythm, just follows that stick, that same trend. And this one is the tennis data by program. And so so these are grouped in two. So the the first one there is English language learners at that program. And then their counterpart, the non-English language learners. And so so if you look at the lines where there are, where the like the English language learners, it really the kind of the orange colored bars, highly capable, homeless, low income migrant, military parent, students on, with a 504 plan, and those with disabilities, those were all lower. students on, with a 504 plan, and those with disabilities, those were all lower last year than they were the year before. So again, just follows the same trend as by ethnicity and grade level. Okay, so I will turn it over to Mr. Scott to talk about student discipline.
And, and not to harp on it too much, I really do believe last year when we were looking at attendance, if you were a student who tested positive for COVID or was, you were out for five or more days. So it was, I really believe that that data is going to look much different for this year. And it, you know, just kind of is what it is based on that. So as we look at student discipline, we wanted to talk a little bit about our discipline rate. The discipline, there's a couple of things to keep in mind. From, from a state, kind of a legal, a law perspective, a policy perspective, we really want to look at out-of-school exclusionary discipline and try to decrease the amount of time students spend out of school due to discipline because of the same reason we want to have kids attending school and want to be attacking, attacking the attendance piece. So we want to make sure that we're providing responsive instructional approaches to support students and all members of the community when it comes to behavior. And discipline rate is really determined, the way that rate is, is determined is by the number of students received and out, one, at least one out-of-school exclusionary discipline divided by the total number of students that we have enrolled throughout the school year. So students who come and go, count on that enrollment side. And so we really want to just look and see how many students experience out-of-school discipline. Our percentage of students who are excluded in response to behavioral violation for the 21, 22 school year was 4.8%. As we look at the trend over the course of time, again, you know, the, between the 1920 and 22 school years, we had various ways that school, students were attending school. And so that's really reflected in that 2.8 and that 1% in the 2020, 2021 school year. And then this last year was 4.8%, which, as we look back between 2014 and 2018, is right kind of in that, that range where we, we typically have been. When we look at our grade levels, you know, it, this is a fairly typical trend as well. We, we tend to have, I mean, there's, there's rules against excluding our students who are younger in kindergarten, first, second, third grade. And we tend to exclude students more as they become older. They become, they exhibit behaviors that are more challenging. And typically, our middle schools are where we see the highest percentage. And then we see a drop off as students do mature through high school. And so that is a ti- fairly typical trend, and, and it's a, it's a reason that we're working really hard on developing interventions of support for students, particularly at our, at our secondary level. As we look at our discipline data based on disaggregated for student characteristics, we have the percentages there by race. And so we have a couple, our, our black African-American students tend to have a higher rate of discipline than the others. As we look at our gender, we have the, the numbers there. Males are typically experience exclusionary discipline more than females. And we did want to put in, on the, on the gender side of things, some of the, the racial side of things, there's some very small numbers in some of those that would be suppressed because there's, there's, there's not enough to keep the information from being personally identifiable. But we wanted to make sure that we knew what kind of numbers we were talking about in terms of those, of those, those, the gender pieces. When we look at our, by, by program, disaggregated by program or discipline data, we'll see that, you know, typically our, most of our groups who experience either they're, they're multilingual learners, homeless, students with disabilities, students with 504s, those all typically tend to be a little bit higher in regards to their discipline rates. So those are really some of the challenges that we look at. And are we, are we responsive in terms of coming up with systems of support for those students to keep them from being excluded from school? And so as we talk a little bit about our goal, we started with kind of where those performance indicators are. And really, the meat of our work is really around our annual objectives. So there's a variety of things we do under the categories of safety and security, our students' social, emotional well-being, attendance, and voice and value that we believe are, are ways that we can move the needle a little bit in terms of all of these indicators that we, we've shared with you, from meeting as a district safety team to address physical safety and environmental safety, to whether it be our partnership with Kennewick School, or Kennewick Police Department in regards to instructional programs and security, or school resource officers, whether it be in terms of developing comprehensive mental health care and for mental health counselors as we work to implement a district-wide comprehensive school counseling plan to enable counselors to work with students on those, on those areas. All of those are the objectives that we've been working on this year to impact those rates that we've shared with you tonight. So just in summary, as we look at those three targets, we're at 84% on our students who report they feel safe, included, and welcomed at school. The attending school went down a little bit to 75.8% for the 21, 22 school year. And then our district-wide discipline rate is at 4.8%. We've had lots of questions so far, but we'd certainly entertain more at this point.
Nicely done, Mr. Scott. Do you have more, sorry? And it goes back up to the percentage of students due to characteristics. The type of discipline, do we look at the different types, whether it was expulsion or stay late after school or do some extracurricular activity? Was that ever broken down, the different types of discipline?
It's typically just, again, if they're out of, if they are excluded for a disciplinary reason out of school for at least a half a day. So it could be a short-term suspension, long-term suspension, emergency expulsion, or expulsion that would, would count that way.
In the past, we went to great lengths not to take a student out of school. So these are repeated offenses or gross breakage of the rules?
It's just if, if a student has been excluded for at least one day, so it doesn't take any consideration. It doesn't weigh a student who's been out of school multiple days for suspension. It's just if a student has received at least one day, then they're, they're counted in that.
What we did do was when we updated all of our student discipline policies to align with the law, there's been work to create a discipline matrix. WASTA has a good model of a discipline matrix that provides guidance to schools to say, the, these are major offenses that might result in exclusionary discipline, a suspension, short or long term, and what the rules are around emergency expulsion. And these are the kinds of offenses that would be minor, that would result in like a, you know, after-school detention or something like that. So do you want to just mention that, that work that's going on to try to ensure that we're, we don't have schools relying on, suspension is sort of the first thing, the, the go-to, right? Because it's not consistent with what the law says we should be doing. And when kids aren't in school, they're not learning. Now, that's not to say there aren't safety issues and, and reasons why students legitimately, you know, need to, to be suspended, but.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, so we, there's a couple of things along those lines that we've, we've been working on. One is, is making sure that we are using discretion. It was not uncommon sometimes for a certain offense to just result in a long-term suspension or expulsion for the term. And so we've really worked with our principals on, on how they exercise this discretion. Because our goal is, number one, to remove, to remove students who need to have some time away from school to allow for, for, for the, the school to maintain safety. What we also want to do is make sure that not all offenses, that, because they're never all equal, that certain offenses maybe warrant a few less days of suspension than others. To that end, we've had far fewer this year, discipline appeals than we've had in previous years. Because I think we're making better decisions for students and for families, we're not excluding them for as long. However, that, again, is not really reflected in this data because this data would be, if you're out for a day, it's not about that term. But we think it's really important that we're, that we're exercising both that discretion and those long-term suspensions, but also discretion in, okay, do we, what are the interventions that we're trying first? Because that's really what our, our state law requires and what our new district policy requires is are there interventions that are happening prior to getting to that exclusionary discipline? And so again, at some of the school-level data, you'll see some, some of those percentages lower than at other schools. And I think that some, that that is related to the level at which they've been able to develop some interventions. And so that's what we're working on across our schools, is to develop those interventions and those steps to do prior to getting to an exclusionary discipline.
On the efforts to see why the, the percentage of the black African-Americans is almost double that of, of the other groups? Is there some, are you making some insight on this too? You know, this data is given to us to say, what can we do to improve it?
Right.
So if you look at that, that, that stands out as a spot for improvement.
So I, I think that where we've talked with our principals is wanting to make sure it's, sometimes it's challenging to get to a root cause. Because what we want to do is look at the student and what they've done. What we've challenged our principals to do is to take a look at our system. What about our academic program, or what about our systems that we have in our school may not be working for certain students in terms of their, their, their student characteristics? Because, because we know that students within these, these student characteristic groups are not more prone to poor behavior, are not more prone to violent behavior than anybody else. I mean, they're just not. But there's something about the system that's not working. And that's where our challenge has been for our principals, to think about those interventions, to, to make sure that we're not, that we're not leaping to a suspension for an offense when we can, when we can do something different to maintain and to really help students learn behaviors that we want them to learn. Because we know that putting students out of school historically and through a research rate, doesn't, doesn't change that behavior significantly.
So Tracy, as the superintendent, is this something we reach out to WASTA or even OSPI and say? Because I know that there's work been done on the state, on the state level.
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, I just want to back up a little bit too, to say that this whole issue of disproportionality in data has really, you know, we're required to now, which is a good thing, disaggregate data and look at our disaggregated data and look for disproportionality, and then try to determine what is behind that disproportionality. And the state's doing a good job of providing schools with resources and districts with webinars and trainings and things like that. You know, WASTA, that's a, a good example, they put out those policy, legal and policy. You know, the document that I'm talking about. And it will give examples of what other districts are doing. It'll give good resources. So the K-12 department has done a whole series this year of kind of modules, discipline modules for administrators' trainings. So it's, you know, if, if there was a, a, one specific thing we could do to solve it, we would. It's a complex issue, and so we're coming at it in a lot of different ways and leaning heavily on the resources that are available statewide. Because when you look at, honestly, the districts across the state and really across the country, the disproportionality exists.
Well, I asked the question to get it documented, and you're all making an effort.
Absolutely.
Don't want that not addressed.
Right.
Okay, anyone else have any other questions? I guess not. You cannot, sorry. Because I'm talking to the ether of my two other people that are in the online, I, I.
No, I have no further questions.
Perfect, thank you. All right, Matt, thank you. Okay. Next up, we have the 2324 preliminary budget. Mr. Roberts will be joining us.
All right, another budget update, only a few more of these, but a little more information on some revenue and staff costs. The enrollment, really not, no change there. We've discussed this, not budgeting any significant increase from current, current numbers. Here's current projected year, 16,500 and about the same. So a pretty conservative, and the total's also right in line with where we're at now. Special ed, a little bit higher there, 2620. This is probably closer to where we'll come in for this year. So not a lot of changes. Open doors program could go to about 50. That, that program is seeing quite a bit of activity. But that's just passed through. And then on to revenue. So you can see, March 23rd, we, we had some projections. We didn't really have the legislative budget completed. So now we do have that. And we try to do our projections, the state still does not have their financial model completed, where they take all the legislative, the factors for special ed and various increases. So we kind of use our own and do the best we can, and we hope it's close. So these could change. But basic ed enrollment's going to drive about $600,000 more. You know, that little increase we had from our budget, and that, that's to be worth about $600,000. Special education, so there's the enrollment change. This has nothing to do really with the legislative changes. This is just a couple hundred more kids in special ed than we budgeted, and those should continue. You know, we'll have that same amount of enrollment next year. And then the formula adjustment, this is where the legislate, the legislators did, you know, pass some additional money. The multiplier that's used in the special ed formula went up significantly. The funding cap went up, but that doesn't impact our district. But it should be about 2.2 million. And that's one where there's a, there's a bunch of factors, and they'll update their formula, and we'll see if we're close. Transportation funding, no change from the last time we discussed. We're projecting 9.9 million this year, and we're projecting the same for next year. And hopefully that'll come in higher. They're just, you don't know till probably next February how those numbers shake out. And then, oh, back to special ed. So this is about, right now, we budgeted, say, 22.5 million this year. And this is going to go up to about 26.5 million when you add these into it for next year. Inflationary formula adjustment, that's 3.7%. So the state figures that on about $90 million of salaries, and we have about $140 million of salaries. But that's the share that would come through the formula. And then the benefits on that about, or this is the medical change, pretty close to the last meeting, the monthly or annual allocation for employer-paid medical benefits. And then what did change is the retirement rate. So the state reduced the retirement rate on certificate-ed staff by 5%. So that's actually less money to us. But since we have, the state has, you know, funds $90 million of salaries, and we have $140 million, it works out to where we get a little bit of savings, you'll see that on the next page. So our reduction is about 5.3 million because we have more, we pay for more staff than the state funds. And we provide professional days and all those things that the state does not fund. So that was a, a change there, and they, they seem to think that that will continue, not that they'll add it back, you know, the following year, and then we'd end up being on the other side of that, having to owe $800,000 more. Material supply, operating cost, that's based on enrollment. It's only about a 3% increase that they passed in the legislature. So that's about on $22 million. That's not, not a significant increase when you look at all the increased, you know, fuel costs and electricity and all those things that are going up. It's, I was hoping for a little more there. And then the social, emotional learning that's being phased in, that covers counselors, nurses, and various other safety and, and type of employees. And that is continued to phase in. We look at that money and, and basically look at how much are we paying? So if we're paying, you know, say we're paying 3.5 million, and now the state gave us 1.7, and we all of a sudden have 5 million, well, that doesn't necessarily mean we're going to go add 1.7 million. We're going to use some of that to make up for some of the costs we're paying for our local dollars. And we'll look at that later. some of the costs we're paying for our local dollars. And we'll look at that later, next year. We looked at it this spring. There were some committees, you know, and we're going to add three counselors at the high school level. And that is where, when you look at the numbers, we are short. You know, elementary's been looked at, middle school's been looked at. High school is pretty obvious, given the enrollment and numbers, that that's where there needs to be some impact. And property tax collections. So the levy pass will start getting some money in part of 2024. And then the same with the levy equalization. So 20.9 million of revenue, we're talking local, basic ed type revenue. And so down a little bit from last time, but if you take out the, the benefits, we actually came in a little better than what kind of expected. And then the staff costs. So we didn't have a lot of information. We were working on some things over a month and a half ago. Some of the changes that were bargained and, you know, the budget was already done. And also some staff that were added during the year, about 1.26 million here. So close to what we discussed, safety officers, 22, 23 officers there. We don't expect, we'll budget this, but we don't expect to spend all that. I mean, we're going to fill some of those positions. Probably won't fill them all. But if we're trying to do 22 officers, we need to, to make sure we remember, you know, what that cost is.
Just interject one thing here. So just explain that a little bit more. I mean, ideally, we would hire all of the safety officers for next year. As we're, you know, right now, it's a high bar in terms of the type of person that we're looking for, given the responsibilities that they have. And we've been working very closely with KPD on all of that. And so we have a pool right now of six to seven potential people who we can hire for next year. And we're continuing to do recruiting and KPD's helping us with that. So, you know, we might have to start the program a little smaller next year, based on the pool, and then build it up. But if we can get all of the qualified people identified by next year, we'll certainly, their budgeted form, we'll certainly hire them. That's our intent. But just to explain that a little bit more.
Sure. Yep.
Yeah.
And down the list here. So elementary cascade, fifth grade, there, there's enrollment there that's moving up. And we just need to add, add a teacher there. And there'd be a portable that we have in storage that's getting moved there this summer. They need that space. And then middle school, high school, other programs, there's really a net, really not any change there. There's, you know, some schools, you know, adding to other schools, people resigning, not filling. So we'll go through that. So that should, should not change much there. And then, you know, with the special ed enrollment, so there's, there's been staff added up here during the year. And they'll be trying to add some more hours, pair of hours, some more positions here, certificate of staff. And so, yeah, with, with that, there's just, we have some new money coming in. And it's going to help fund some of these, these added costs. I'm trying to look down here. And we did have, there is one more administrative coordinator type help for that program. Can't remember if it's in here or not. But, you know, just given all the, the students and the, the activities we have to go through and meetings and different things going on, issues, it's, it's a lot. And we're trying to put a placeholder in for that position. And then here's the counselor staff, one at each high school for a thousand dollars. And then there is a support position clerical compliance type tracking for, for maintenance. And that's partially kind of a bargain type thing, too. And then here's our inflationary adjustment, 3.7%. Costs more for our district. You know, we have more, like I said, more staff cost than the state funds. So 8.3 million there. But then the retirement rate reduction, remember the, the state, the reduction there was 4.5. So our reduction is larger because of all those additional staff costs. And here's the medical for, for our district, a little bit higher than what the state gives us. Again, we have more staff than they fund. Teacher retirements, normally this number is eight or nine hundred thousand dollars. And, you know, it's just only like, basic ed, local funded, maybe 15 retirements, 15 to 20. And so, you know, three or four years ago, it was generally a lot higher. So maybe that'll pick up in the next few years. And then we have pools of money overload, coaching contracts, various extracurricular contracts, cash outs. And inflation gets added on to that, too. That COLA 3.7% gets added on to all those costs. And that's about eight hundred and forty-seven thousand. And then some other changes there. Now, in your weekly, weekly update, there's a detail that ties to this. So you can go through that and see more detail on all this, these costs. So overall, you know, we were thinking 14, 15 million. If you take this out here, we're pretty close to what we've been kind of projecting. So any, any questions there on the staff costs? Just trying to break it down there.
I have a question. Oops. Go ahead.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, Diane.
I was, I have a question. And this may be in the breakdown, and I didn't see it. You said that some of that additional 1.75 million that will go for SEL will supplant some of what the district is already paying now. Do you know how much that is?
Not off the top of my, my head.
That's fine. When you find that, and no big hurry, but when you find that, could you just send that to me, please?
Yeah.
Or send it to all of us, I guess.
This is definitely going to help. And like I said, you know, we'll look at it again. And if we can do more, you know, counselors and things, we'll, we'll look at that and evaluate. There are, like I said, nurses and various other staff in there. So we'll put some of those, we'll get that to you.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. So moving on to the material supply operating cost, there's a, not a lot of change from last time with some of the utilities and things. Those are pretty much all the same as what we discussed probably a month ago. Curriculum adoption. So we haven't put the million dollars back. And to be honest, you know, it really needs to be 1.5 to 2 million. We do need to put back some of the, the annual commitments that we have to pay. So there's about, you know, 235,000 dollars of contracts for annual consumables and, and things that we, we do have to pay. And so even though the curriculum adoption money is not back in there, that doesn't mean we won't take a look at some things, use some fund balance and try to, try to get some of that done. It's just on paper, we just can't really do that quite yet. And then we, we talked about special education, some large increases there, residential facility that we're using. It's fairly expensive. Or I, I guess it's more of an onsite behavior facility that we use over, you know, the tri-cities. And then a residential facility for a student that is expensive also. And then here's the SRO contract. Again, that's the middle schools, I believe, and some inflation. And Dr. Pierce can maybe explain a little on how that's going.
On the SRO, the additional SROs?
Yeah.
Yeah. So latest update on that is we think in our conversation with KPD that they'll be, we'll be able to add one school resource officer at the beginning of the year, and then the other two likely in January of 2024. So we'd add one at the start of the year and two mid-year based on their staffing, because these are actually the, you know, KPD staff that work in our schools.
And then down the list here. So we did meet with the Reading Foundation. There's a little increase here. Amistad and the Team Read have coordinated in, in that program. Amistad wants to start that program there. Team Read says, you know, they can do that there. They, they have a pipeline there for the volunteers. And, you know, it's a small increase, but definitely probably one that's worthwhile to tackle there. I know Gabe was interested in that, too. And, and when they look at Team Read, you know, it's about the school. And when we talk to them, the school and, and getting volunteers. And there's just a lot more to it than just, you know, putting the program in. And Team Read is, you know, always looking for opportunities. And I think they'll continue to do that throughout the year for next year. But so unless there's any issues there, we'll go ahead and, you know, have that contract, you know, renewed to include Amistad. So that's kind of the local funded basic ed, 2.37 million. And, and again, you have a detailed weekly update that there's more details on some of those increases that add up to this. And we haven't quite got finished here with some of the, the money that, that basically is federal and doesn't really impact basic ed local funding. But we had a reduction in our title money that I'll talk about a little later. And that's going to pretty much not allow for us to add two communities and schools. We have 11 now. We talked about maybe adding a couple of schools, but that's probably going to have to be put on pause for another year and see how things shake out in a year with some of that funding. So then with all this, these changes here, back here in March 23rd, as, as you know, with the levy failing, we're short revenue by about 25 million. Idea is to whittle this down as much as we can over the next, you know, two or three years. So here's the numbers we've discussed. And this is, you know, a 300 million dollar budget, 275 million dollars of cost. And this is where we were at March 23rd. So May 10th, here's the changes we talked about, 20.9 million revenue, 16.3 million expenses. So actually, or 12.2 million expenses. We've actually gained about a million dollars. And whether that holds up based on the state changing their formula and seeing how, how we match up, hopefully it does hold up. And then down here, we plan on using some SIR money. You know, getting down here, if we have our fund balance, the target's to end up with 50 million dollars. This has 43 here. We should be in good shape fund balance wise. You know, hopefully like we can get 45 to 50 million dollars of the fund balance increase. And that'll help us, help us weather this through here. Because we still have a deficit here running forward. So in 2425, if we project forward as best we can, it's still a 5.8 million dollar deficit. And normally, you know, we try to get around, we can get down to 5 million, we think we can manage that. Like Dr. Pierce said, you know, there's safety officers, we're not going to fill all those, you know, in, in this year, year here. So there's other things like that, that positions don't get filled and things. And we can probably manage this pretty good. But once it starts getting over 5 million, then, you know, that, that's kind of where we, we try to say, you know, we got to try to, try to whittle that down. And if we have a big fund balance, if we increase this to 50 million, this number goes up from 36 million by 7 million. These numbers all go up. And we should be able to weather the next two or three years until we get to another levy. And then, you know, these, the state may do some other funding here that, that helps out with that. So that's kind of where we're at. You know, I'm probably more concerned about 2425 than I am about 2324. You know, we realize on paper, it doesn't look good. But, you know, we're still short 12 million dollars in levy funds. So unless there's any other ideas, our plans to kind of grow the fund balance, and you've seen a lot of districts having trouble. And if they had a bigger fund balance, they probably could, could weather things a little longer. We want to extend our SIR, expires in August, September, 2024. If we can build up the fund balance, we're basically extending our SIR a couple of years longer. Okay. So we'll, we'll have some more in two weeks on this. And get closer to hopefully being finalized. Some of the other money that we don't talk about that much, we'll, we'll update these numbers in two weeks. But here's the Title I funding. And you can see, we had a big increase here, 2122, 7.1 million dollars. Significant. You know, and at the time, we're like, that's, I don't know how they did that. They use census numbers. And, you know, we were kind of leery of it. And it has been dropping. So 7.1 to 6.7. And then next year, a big hit. It's about 650,000 dollars. So if this continues, you know, it's significant. We look at pretty much all this money up here, title, LAP, and learning assistance called high poverty. We kind of try to use all this money to fund a bunch of positions and keep schools whole. And when one of these pots of money goes down, it just impacts, you know, how we kind of move money around to keep schools whole with their staff. And even this type of a decrease, it's significant. And it, it takes quite a bit of time to try to, try to make things work. So we think we can make it work for 2324. 2425, we'll have to wait and see. And that's when too, the boundaries will change, enrollment will change, and we'll be able to have a little better idea of where schools are at. But the Title I funding, so basically here's the schools that get that money. About 24 schools. You have to have a certain poverty level. Schools, schools over 25% have to be funded. And then we've tried to dip down with some of this new money. We've tried to dip down and, and pick up more schools, provide them more funding, provide them more opportunity to, to add, you know, some staff to make an impact. And the learning assistance program, this is the LAP base. So it's targeted toward students that are below grade level. And all the schools get a little bit of LAP base money. The ones that have higher poverty get a lot more. And this money's increased over the years as our enrollment poverty base has increased a little bit. And the state, with their inflation and various factors, those numbers go up. The LAP assistance for in greater than 50% is the high poverty money. That's what funds communities and schools. You can see the number of schools that get this money. And that is the school's decision where they take that money and, and try to do communities and schools. So some have done that, some haven't. But that's really how that works. And if they don't do communities and schools, they will, you know, hire certain staff, or not do communities and schools and hire staff that they feel they, they need. And then the bilingual program, there's 22 schools getting funding. And that's basically based on the number of bilingual students and the needs there. So we don't touch on that much. There'll be, we'll finalize these numbers for, for the, the budget. And they, they kind of tie to the, the section below here that some of this that we don't talk about. So any questions on the different funding there? Federal, state category?
Vic, I have a question.
Yeah.
How many, how many outside agencies do we partner with or fund that come in and support our schools? Like the, the, I'm just off the top of my head. I think communities and schools and Team Read jump out. Do we have other agencies that we fund or help fund that come in and do work like those two?
That's, that's probably a better question for, you know, federal, federal programs, teaching and learning, because I believe there are some, but I'm just not that tied into it.
I, I can chime in here. Communities and schools, you mentioned the Reading Foundation, gear up. Alyssa's approaching the podium here. What are we leaving out?
The only other one that comes to mind quickly is a small grant through a refugee impact grant and the Family Learning Center.
Thank you.
Okay. So we just, just a few outside agencies that we.
The other one that, yeah, the other one I would say would maybe be in this category would be our mental health counselors through our partnership with comprehensive health. So those are contract right positions that we fund and the people come in and work in our schools and support our school counselors and students.
Kind of like, so there's some of those.
Yeah. KPD, right, our school resource officer. So that would maybe be another category.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah. So next page, we've seen this before. I'll just summarize a little bit. You know, levy rates, you know, the maximum is 250. We're well below that. Enrollment, we don't expect it to increase over the next several years. And, you know, the, the state provides cost of living. We have to pay more. A lot of districts are, you know, they raise their levy to fund some of that. So and, and some of the new funding is not as flexible. The special ed funding, you know, I think will be fine. But there are a lot of strings attached to some of the new funding coming out. As you know, we're using SIR in fund balance. We're trying to build up the, the fund balance through SIR. Some of the areas that we're concerned about. So, you know, curriculum adoption, that does need to get put back eventually in the budget. But as long as we have, you know, enough fund balance, we can take a look at that every year and, and see where we're at and then try to knock out some stuff. And then, so there's a lot of positions we have that are basically indirectly funded with SIR funds. They may not be directly charged there, but that money's coming in and we're keeping people on staff. So after next year, middle school, elementaries, you know, we have some really low class sizes due to us keeping staff on board. So that'll need to be looked at. We have. We have healthroom support that supports some of the buildings where there's not a nurse. You know, that's something we'd like to try to keep, so that's $290,000. And that's still funded next year. Mental health services, 1.2 million. Tutoring, 1 million. So those are things we'll have to take a hard look at in a year, and see how, whether we keep some of that around. And then we've talked about the next two or three years, and I think we've hit that pretty hard on how we're trying to manage that. So hopefully, May 24th, we'll have pretty much a, a final, you know, version, probably a few more details, and then in June, when we do the adoption, it'll be a little more trimmed down, as the board has, by then should have plenty of information.
Wonderful, thank you. Any other questions for Vic?
Wonderful, thanks, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay, next up is the initial boundary recommendations. Mr. Phillips will be presenting.
We are here to give you an update where we are on the boundary change process and provide an initial recommendation. Just a reminder about the goals for why we're going through this. One is to decrease the enrollment at Amen Creek and at Sagecrest. Both of those schools are, they're full. Amen Creek, one of our newest elementary schools, already has a portable there. Sagecrest, I believe, has eight portables, I believe they're using, or have eight portables. And they're building like crazy on both of their boundaries, so we're looking to decrease enrollment there. We also want to try to better distribute enrollment across the elementary schools. We have, we have a school, Edison, right now, that has, well, as of, actually, as of the October count, was a 326. And I looked today, Amen Creek has 749 students, so there's a pretty big disparity of enrollment at, at our elementary schools. Well, I try to accommodate future growth in the west end of the district. There are a lot, a lot of building going on on the south side of Thompson Hill, and then up at the top of Rihanna, as it crosses over the freeway there, in between there and Badger Mountain. A lot of, a lot of building, or a lot of building to come, and that's the Amen Creek boundary. And then in the fall of 2024, well, actually, it's looking like Ridgeview will possibly move in the winter before, but for sure by the fall of 2024, they'll move into their new building, which will be a larger building, and so we wanna try to increase enrollment This is a timeline that we've shared before. We want to complete this process this year, if possible, but the changes won't take place until the fall of 2024. So it wouldn't be for this coming school year, it would be for the following school year. We've met with, we've met with the board on December 14th, just to kinda give an overview. We met again on February 22nd, and then a board study session on, on April 26th. We have completed three in-person presentations with parents and community to talk about the, the scenarios that we've come up with. We have received input through an online survey, and actually, some people, rather than doing online, they actually filled them out right there at the meeting on a, on a paper copy. And then tonight, we're here for an initial recommendation, and then in a couple of weeks, we'll be back for a final recommendation and then board action. So, and I don't wanna read this whole thing, but this, this was a slide that was in our, in the online presentation to explain Scenario 5. So the board and the district continue to seek input. Four boundary scenarios were initially developed, and then the community gave input on those four. Like I said, on April 26th, we met, and you reviewed and discussed feedback at, at that meeting. And then based on the community feedback, the board provided feedback and direction to district staff, asking that components of Scenario 1 and Scenario 4 be used to create a new scenario, a hybrid of starts. For the 24, 25 school year, we would be looking to grandfather fifth grade students, fifth graders that year. So those students, those fifth graders in the fall of 2024, today they're third graders. So any third grader now, or they become fifth graders in a year and a half, we would, we're recommending that we grandfather them, to allow them to stay at the school that they're at, along with their siblings. They'd be allowed to do that as long as they provide transportation. So I wanna take a look at Scenario 5. This is the current map that we have today, and not, all the schools are labeled because they're not part of the boundary change process. Like, for example, like, like Westgate, they're not part of, of the boundary change scenario, so they're not labeled. Avistad here is not labeled, and so forth. But this is Scenario 5, and a lot of it is the same as the other four scenarios. Like, for example, this area here, off of Steptoe and Center Parkway in Clearwater, we'd still have them going to Sunset View, as an example. The changes are really, they're, they're in red. So what came out at the board study session was to look at the possibility of moving the Creekstone neighborhood over here into Lincoln. So that, that's new for, it's different from all the other scenarios. And then these two arrows here show, it shows a difference in what we're doing with this larger neighborhood. Scenario 4, the whole rectangle, that whole neighborhood, was gonna go up into Canyon View. It was, it was gonna put a squeeze on Canyon View. They, they could probably handle that, but it was gonna be tight. They, they still have a couple of classrooms that are, that are empty, a couple of portables that they could use. But at the study session, we talked about splitting this neighborhood here, not quite in half, and having this area here, this dividing line here is, is Vancouver. And so the difference would be, part of them would go, this area would go up into Canyon View, and then this area here would go up into Southgate. All the other changes, all the blue arrows are the same. I know in a couple scenarios, the Hanson Park area, in a, in a couple scenarios, they were, we were looking to move all of Hanson Park into Ridgeview. In a couple scenarios, we were going to take the top section of Hanson Park bordered by Clearwater and Fourth Avenue, and moving them up into Sunset View. So for this fifth scenario, because that the board's direction, we, we wanted, and really it came out heavily in the input from the community, is we wanna keep Hanson, Hanson Park together. So in this fifth scenario, Hanson Park stays together and moves into Ridgeview. Any questions about Scenario 5 and the map?
You know, I don't think I have any questions, but I think it's a, you know, one of the, when we went to the public, we went to the public with four scenarios.
Yes.
And, and asked for feedback, gave the stuff, and then we, as a board, came up and said, oh, by the way, let's, let's do something different. And we kinda sucker punched the Kane, the, the Creekstone people. We've been hearing lots about that, at least I certainly have last couple of days. Not saying that's not we end up doing, but I think it's really important to understand that, that when we ask for their inputs, that was not part of our, any of our presentations. And I think that's ultimately on us as a board, but I think it's something we definitely need to think about, because, you know, as, as we see, there's plenty of angry people here in the Creekstone area. Again, because it wasn't part of it, and this is, I'm not pointing blame anywhere, this is, this is just, just a fact, and I think it's something that we really need to, to understand and appreciate, that we went to the public with one thing, and then it's, oh, oh, by the way, we're gonna do something different. And I think it's very important that we, we acknowledge that and understand that, because bottom line, they're pissed off. I don't, I, sorry, I don't know how else to phrase it, so.
And so when we get to the, there's a slide here that's like a summary of the feedback, that there are a couple different things about the Creekstone area that will be in that summary.
And just to add a couple of things, so, board members, you have a folder in front of you, and this information was sent to board members who weren't here tonight, but you have, we're gonna summarize, so just like we did with the first set of the four scenarios, we did ask for community input on those. Then after the study session, where the idea for Scenario 5 was developed, then another round of input on Scenario 5 was done. And so we've got, we use the same kind of form that had been used previously, so you have the full, full feedback in your folder, and then Rob's gonna take us through sort of a summary of the feedback that we've received on Scenario 5.
Okay, thank you.
So that, that's the map of Scenario 5, and if all of those moves, represented by all those arrows, the blue and the red arrows, then this table would show what the projected enrollment would be in those schools. So I'm starting right up here from the top, Edison would be pretty close to that capacity, Ridgeview would be under, giving them room to grow from that south side of Thompson Hill. Vista would be a little bit over. Vista has, they have between portables and, and classrooms inside the building, they have like five classrooms available.
So that's good, I, I should've pointed that out as well. So another document that's in your folder and that you received earlier today is a follow-up on the question that came up from the board during the study session, is how, how could you have projected enrollment scenarios that show the school over capacity? And it was explained at the study session that that capacity number that's shown on the screen doesn't account for classrooms that currently are being used for things other than classrooms. So you have another document in your, in your folder, and just to piggyback on what Rob was saying, the capacity of Vista at 402 means that if you just take the classrooms that are currently being used as classrooms right now, and you see how many students could be part of those classrooms, that's where the 402 comes. Doesn't account for the fact that Vista has five additional, or five other spaces that could be used as classrooms that are currently being used as classrooms right now. So maybe their true capacity is 402 plus the five classrooms. So that, that was some of the kind of clarity that was discussed that we, that the board needed in terms of how many actual classrooms are available at these schools. So that's what you have in front of you as well.
And, and the capacity, thank you. And the capacity is also, it, it's a pretty conservative number, because when we look at what the capacity would be, like kindergarten, first, second, third grade, we, we use 20 students in each of that classroom, which is a pretty conservative number. For fourth and fifth, we use 25. But typically, like, like in fourth and fifth, typically you see classrooms 27, 28, 29. And in the K3, we try really hard to keep it at 20, but at times it sneaks up over, over that. So anyway, it's a, it's a conservative number. So when we've talked about this table, the, the one thing that, at least for me, it, it kept catching my eye, which, it's Southgate. So, so we're looking at taking this area here and moving it up into Southgate. We aren't proposing that we take this rectangle here, moving them down into Lincoln. But even by moving some of these students down into Lincoln, their capacity, it says 439, and, and I know it can be a little bit over that, because they're conservative numbers, but the projected enrollment is, is 456. And, but, but what that doesn't take into account is that they're building that apartment complex south of 10th, east of Ely, where I, we, of course, we can't really guess how many students will be, elementary students will be in that apartment complex, but there will be some. And so as we talked, we wondered about, so this, this is 10th Avenue right here, and this is 395 right here, and this is Ely right here. What we wondered was, no, not Ely, this is Ely right here, it's kinda hidden by the polygon word. This is actually, I believe, Conley. So that apartment complex sits right here, right about where that O is. So what we were thinking was, what if we were to move the apartment complex into Lincoln as well?
No one lives in that apartment complex right now, it's being, it's under construction. But by extending that original polygon a little bit, there's no other families in that area, with the exception of one family that could be grandfathered individually. So then it wouldn't be moving any existing students, but it would ensure that if there are a bunch of students who end up living in that apartment complex, we don't overcrowd Southgate with these moves.
When I, I talked to Transportation today to make sure that if, if we were to do that, could they handle the transportation end of that? She said that would be a problem. But what she did remind me of is, so all of these little dots are homes that have an elementary student in them. And in this area, there is one home here that has an elementary child. But when I was talking with April Heiser Transportation, she said, there may be one home with an elementary child in it right now, but there are seven other homes that are, are near that home. And while there are no elementary students in there today, as people move and then move in, there potentially could be, so we'd have to, we have to figure that, that piece out. Anyway, so that was just something, again, it, something, something inside of me just kept wondering about Southgate. And so this would help Southgate, they, they could, it would, it would work, but the addition of, of students, elementary students in the apartment complex could be problematic. All right, so the parents and community members gave a lot of feedback, more feedback on Scenario 5 than feedback on scenarios 1 through 4. I did a presentation on YouTube, there were 867 views on, on that presentation, which to me is just amazing, because it was only a couple of weeks worth of, of a window. And then there were 146 responses to the online survey, which I think is a, is a pretty good amount. So there were three questions, what do you like best about Scenario 5, what do you like least about Scenario 5, and then it just asked for other, other input and comments. So a summary for Scenario, you know, what do you like best? There were many people that liked that scenario for various reasons, like that, like the neighborhood below Lincoln that belongs to Sagecrest, they liked it, because they're not gonna have to move, as an example. So there were various reasons. A few people noted that school enrollments are a little more balanced than they, than they are right now. Comments about Hanson Park staying together. There were some positive comments about Creekstone now being part of Lincoln, there were some And there were a few comments, comments about the east Sagecrest neighborhood going to Southgate, that one smaller rectangle, there were some comments about, you know, they're happy with the fact that they get to go to Southgate. And then what do you like least about Scenario 5? Again, this is a summer, you have, you have every comment in front of you there. Again, many didn't like Scenario 5 for very. Again, many didn't like scenario five for various reasons. Creekstone is being moved from Ridgeview to the Lincoln boundary. Families purposefully purchasing homes, there are a few comments about this. They purposely purchased homes on the Ridgeview boundary so that they could go to Ridgeview and now they're being moved to Lincoln. Families having to attend school, there were a lot of comments about families having to attend school at the Fruitland Building for a year and a half, thinking they're gonna get to go to the brand new Ridgeview. But now they're not gonna get to do that. The east Sagecrest boundary being moved to another school. A lot of parents in that area would like to stay, stay at Sagecrest. Families want their fifth grade student to stay at their present school for their last year of elementary school. I think that would be solved with, if the grandfather of those fifth grade students or their siblings. There were some comments about, don't do anything. Don't, don't change any boundaries. The district would have to, of course, figure out how to keep adding students to a few schools. But, so there were some of those comments. The northeast corner of Ridgeview having to move to Sunset View. There were some comments from folks, I assume from that neighborhood of about 46 students. They wanted to stay with Ridgeview. Some, there were some concerns about some schools being above capacity. Since the east, there were a couple of comments, since the east side of the Sagecrest boundary is so far away, they should be moved to another school's boundary, which is kind of what 5A is, instead of that area that's so close to Sagecrest. Southgate will be above capacity. We'll have to find room for the new apartment complex. So, so that concept of moving the apartment complex to Lincoln will solve that. And then Mr. Connors, this, where it says Creekstone moving to Lincoln wasn't presented in the first four scenarios. There were a number of comments about what you spoke about. There were a couple of comments about the south Thompson Hill moving to Ridgeview instead of Sagecrest. And then a couple of folks just expressed a concern about families attending school across 395 from where their house is. And then do you have any further input? There was a lot of input in this section that was already listed up at the top two portions. Not leaving the Amen Creek neighborhood behind Black Rock Coffee on Steptoe. They want that moved to Sunset View. Scenario five was to last minute. And then people just asking about being able to do a choice transfer to stay at their school.
Rob, I have a comment on the, the person's comment about some schools were above capacity. And I think Dr. Pierce already commented on that. But I wanted to make sure people remembered about the additional classrooms that are not being used at this time, or not being used for a classroom. So that would, I believe, in most cases, take care of that concern. Is that correct?
I do believe, yes, definitely, I do believe that.
I just want people to be aware of that.
Rob, this is Gabe. I think the, I, I'm happy with, kind of to Mike's point, if we, if we needed to get more feedback or whatever we need to do since scenario five was a, was a last minute change. But as we, as we narrowed this down, I think we're getting to a point where there, there's gonna be, you know, we can't make everyone happy, unfortunately. And we are gonna have to, to move some, some folks around. And for instance, you know, potentially if it's not the 60-some families in the Creekstone area, you know, it's those 60-some families just south of Lincoln, right there in the Sagecrest area now, just below. I think what we initially had in the first four scenarios, that, that group of families basically bobbles in Parkway in that segment, yep, right there. So, you know, if it's not Creekstone, it's probably gotta be that section. So, I mean, we can keep gathering feedback and, and go on where we need to go. But, you know, at some point, unfortunately, we're, we're just not gonna make everyone happy. And I think we can, I don't know. We'll have to figure it out, but do the best we can. But it's, it's not gonna be perfect for everyone.
And Gabe, I agree. I think that the big, the big thing here is I just want to make sure that we're giving everyone, you know, opportunity, opportunity here to speak and have their voices heard. And as I say, we may have a going with scenario five, I just don't know. But at this point, I'm, I know I'm not ready to make a decision just yet. I'd like to give people a little more time to chew on this and hear, hear people's feedback.
Hundred percent agree, Mike. I have no, no problem doing that. To me, this is something we wanna, we obviously want to get the best situation that we can. So if that means taking longer and gathering more feedback and potential other options, I'm, I'm fine with that, too. So I agree, Mike.
Thank you. Again, I'm certainly not trying to punt this down the road here. But again, I think I'd like to give people another, you know, even just another couple of weeks here to look at this and make a discussion before we, before we go down this road. I think it's important for everyone to have a chance to digest this and give us more feedback. Ron, Diane, you guys have any thoughts on this?
I have a scenario seven.
Same on you. No, I, I also, you know, don't think we need to rush into this. I, I do understand, Rob, you know, that we need to get this done so we can start doing things. But, you know, just like your example today of splitting that lower polygon below Southgate and Canyon View, you know, as we've reiterated each one, or iterated each one, we've come up with answers to some of the concerns that people have. And so as been, as been said before, there are concerns. And, you know, we need to look at those. And there may or may not be answers to those. But we certainly need to give time and, and credence to what people have to say.
I don't mind waiting.
So my question would be, what, what, what do you envision the next kind of step of the process being? Do you want, are there two, two scenarios that you want us to then go back out and say like, these are the two final scenarios for your input? Just, just wanting to make sure we have real clear direction on what you're envisioning that will help inform, you know, the final, the final decision. Is it just more time to comment on scenario five? Or scenario five A with the, with the little, you know, addition of, of that polygon to address? Is it just more time for that? Or is it, or is it taking back like scenario one, four, and five A out to say these are the final three scenarios that the board? You know, I just want to make sure we do it the way that you're asking, you know, that, that's gonna help provide the information.
This is Diane. So my choice would be additional time for comment on five A with that lower polygon. But if possible, because I want people to be able to see the, the real capacity of the schools with those additional rooms. So, and I just think for us, too, and I've tried to make my own little chart, but it would be easier, I think, if we all could see the same chart so that we see the real numbers that are possible in schools.
Yeah, I just think, again, I just think-
Correct. So that one there with the real capacity with all the classrooms. Because is that not quite accurate?
No, I think, I think what you're saying makes sense. So for example, Vista's capacity wouldn't be shown as 402. It would be shown at, you know, 402 plus five classrooms. So it's maybe closer to 502 or something. I'm just faulting that, right?
I just think that would be really helpful for, for everyone, board included.
Yeah, and again, I think for me, I'd just like to give people another couple of weeks here to, to digest this, get comments in, have conversations about it. Because again, the conversations are coming my way fast and furious. So I just want to make sure that we're, that everyone's being heard and we give everyone a chance to voice their opinion. And again, with Diane's extra information, I think that would be helpful.
So, so if we're giving more, if we're giving more people more, more time to provide feedback, from what I can tell, the, the, the major stickler in, in this scenario is the Creekstone section. So do we, do we provide, do we, that section right there? So do we provide scenario five B and move that polygon to that, that south of Lincoln section in Sagecrest? Because that would be the other piece that would be impacted. One of those two sections has, would have to move to Lincoln, I think, to make the numbers work. So do we present that as five B and give everyone an opportunity to provide feedback for the next few weeks on those two scenarios? Because it's gonna, it's one of those two areas, I think, that has to move.
So you're saying either the, the Sagecrest to, to Lincoln from like scenario one or the Creekstone to Lincoln from scenario five?
Yeah. Yeah, because they're, they're both, both sections are 60 to 65 students. I mean, one of those sections, based on every scenario we have, one of those sections is gonna have to move to Lincoln. And I, and I don't know how you, I don't know how you determine which one based on, based on feedback either. I guess that's, we'll have to discuss that, but.
And Rob, can you just verify that the, the numbers, that polygon from scenario one?
This, this one here?
Yeah, I'll hold it up here. You know, that, this one that would go to Lincoln, is that roughly the same number?
It's pretty close. It's 65, I know this one's 65. I can't remember the exact number of Ridgeview families in here, but it's in the 60s.
I feel like that was 65.
And then there's about 20, like almost 30 people who live in Creekstone who already go to Lincoln. But it, but it's a, it's pretty close, either Creekstone going to Lincoln or this area of Sagecrest going to Lincoln.
No doubts. I shouldn't say it that way. I'm okay with it either way. Thank you, make a good point. But I think we get the feedback and then be ready at the next meeting to make a decision.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay, so I'm just gonna summarize and make sure that we're on the same page. We're going to take scenario five A. Can you go to that one? That just says that. So we'll take scenario five A and say, I suppose we could say it either version one, which would be what you're seeing here with the Creekstone to Lincoln, or sort of version two, which would have a new polygon from scenario one going to Lincoln. And we would ask for feedback on sort of, those are the two kind of finalist scenarios that the board is considering and get feedback through our same processes that we've done to date. And then get all that feedback collated and so forth and make a decision at the next board meeting.
Agreed.
And then the polygon at the bottom of Southgate and Canyon View?
Yeah, that was, that was my question. So if we, we end up moving this, these 65 or so students up into Lincoln, would we then not do this down here? Which then might also keep us from having to do the apartments down there.
Because the reason we were doing that, that was not part of those two, excuse me, the south of Lincoln, or excuse me, south of Southgate. Those weren't part of scenario one because that Sagecrest part was, right?
Right. In scenarios one, one through four, in scenarios one through four, this neighborhood here was going up into Lincoln. And this wasn't in scenario one through four. But, and, no, I take that back. In four, I take that back. In four, this was left alone. And this large rectangle was up into Canyon View. But we did that because we had a scenario that left these folks alone. So yeah, I guess my question, I think Diane, this is what you are asking is, so if we were to create that scenario that puts this back into, going into Lincoln like we talked about, not Creekstone, that we would then not do this?
I believe that's correct. At least the polygon area up above with the new apartments. I'm not looking at the exact numbers on the lower one. But then those people at Ely would not have to cross 395 to Lincoln. And then I believe you wouldn't have to do the lower one either.
Yeah, exactly. I agree that if we were to go ahead and move these people into Lincoln like we had in one, one, two, and three, that we wouldn't need to do this. And if we didn't need to do this up in the Southgate, we wouldn't need to do this.
Okay, yep.
Okay, so we're eliminating the public, helping us with that? We're gonna make that decision and eliminate that as an option and put it back out there?
We, we don't have to.
See, I say, let's get the public input, including those moves. And at the next meeting, we'll make this decision that we're trying to make right now. That's, that's just me. I think we give the public an opportunity to see the whole scenario, what we're talking about. Good luck explaining it till it's too late. But then at time period, they'll see the shifts that we're talking about. And I don't think we should eliminate them now.
These down here.
Right, I think it should be on the table.
So, Ron, are you saying that do like a five A with the way we have it now? And the five B with the lower people over there going up to Lincoln?
Yeah.
Okay, I would be okay with that.
So the only difference between five A, and actually, it's two differences together. But the only difference between five A and five B is five B would move these families into Lincoln. That would be on B, rather, or instead of Creekstone.
Correct. But I think Ron's point is good, you know? Then everybody who's involved gets a comment as opposed to what happened this time when we made changes and there were people who had not known that they needed to comment. So I, I would agree with Ron.
Yeah, I would, I, I would just caution that moving that, moving that polygon down there to the Sagecrest group, to Lincoln, and leaving that polygon over there, that, that's gonna put, if all those students leave Sagecrest, that's gonna put them probably around 460 to 470 students, just FYI.
They'd lose about, I think this area here is, this area here, I believe, is around 90, 90 students. This is 65, so 150.
Yeah.
Right now.
Just, just a heads up on the numbers is, is all I was throwing out there.
I think so. So I, I think, just thinking about timelines here. So if, I don't, I don't, I don't know if we need to do, and you guys let us know. I don't, I don't, I don't know if we need to do, and you guys let us know if you think differently, another I don't know how long it takes to do the YouTube presentations that you've done. But if we, it could, I guess my question for you, Rob, is could could you put together the the YouTube presentation of the two news, the two scenarios and the online forum by this Friday? So people would have, because the next board meeting is May 24th, so we would want to make sure that people had at least a full, a full week to give input, which would be May 15 through 19th, if we could, you know, get it out by Monday at the latest. Is that doable?
Yes, I mean, yes, it's doable. The the last presentation that I did, I think we pushed that out on, yeah, I think we pushed it out on Monday. The the actual recording of it, it's like a half an hour. The time will be just creating not only, well, we keep this, the 5A, we'll be creating the 5B, which is going to take some time. And and then just creating the rest of the PowerPoint.
And feedback forms. Okay, and we did do this last round in Spanish as well, and so we would want to make sure that we do this next round in Spanish as well, so.
The presentation was subtitled in Spanish and then the the input form was also in Spanish.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Welcome.
Okay, so we'll, our our goal will be to get it out on Monday, May 15th, and it'll be open. We could have it closed on May 22nd, so we could have it open a full Monday to Monday. Does that sound good?
Thank you. Rob, thank you very much. I know this is tough stuff, so thank you for your effort.
Absolutely. Thank you, Rob.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So we need a five-minute break here, so we're going to break here. So we'll come back about seven minutes after eight. Okay.
All right, Diane and Gabe, you guys with us?
I'm here.
Perfect.
Yep, I'm here.
All right, guys, I am going to call the meeting back into order, please. All right. All right, guys, we're going to come back to order, please. Okay, next on the agenda is new business. Inside voice. So we are going to move on to our dual language adoption recommendation. Alyssa Santillar will be presenting.
Yeah, thank you. We are excited to be here tonight. I have Amanda Brown here with me tonight presenting. She's going to share a little bit about our process. We did a couple of things different. I'll talk about it in just a minute. I just want to remind the board quickly that we had an annual objective this year that we would look at a dual curriculum for our grades K5 for our dual language program. So we're going to share about our process tonight, have our recommendation. Like I said, we kind of had a different process for this adoption. We, it was co-facilitated by Amanda. She was our curriculum advisory chair for dual language along with another district leader who wasn't able to be here tonight. But she'll talk a little bit about the process and some of the strengths and outcomes of this co-facilitation.
So our process started in the winter of 2022, as we identified a core curriculum adoption committee that met twice a month all the way from winter to spring of last school year. The main task of that committee was to create a rubric, and our guiding principles for that rubric were identifying our common interests on the core committee, as well as using the Center for Applied Linguistics rubric for curriculum adoption, specifically for dual language. And so we invited multiple publishers to come and present to just the core committee so we could screen what we, how how those publishers matched up against what we were wanting to see and what our rubric would look like. And we we measured a rubric against those to start off with. And then this this last school year, starting in the fall of 2022, we invited all dual language teachers to be a part of this, it wasn't the core committee, it was the curriculum adoption committee. And that was what Ms. Hala was talking about, a little bit different in that every dual language teacher was invited to participate. And in our core committee, we had, we had narrowed it down to three curriculums. And we heard presentations in that whole committee this year. And then teachers then took the three curricula into their classrooms, and some did test drive, some just measured it against the rubric based on the materials that we were provided. And then some of our committee members also reached out to neighboring districts here in Washington and in Oregon, and spoke to district administration and also teachers who were using the those curricula to see how they felt about it and how their implementation was going. And so just to give you a little bit more information about our actual committee composition, like I said, all dual language, language teachers were invited to attend, as well as principals of dual language schools and the district staff. So Sarah Dattoro, who is our migrant multilingual coordinator, co-facilitated with me, and and I served as the chair of the committee. It took this eight months of this school year, beginning in the fall, up until just a few months ago. And like I said, we heard presentations from those three curricula that we had narrowed it down to in the core committee, and those three were Benchmark, Adelante, and Advance. And that was, those are their Spanish and English versions of that curriculum. American Reading Company and their Spanish and English versions, and also Midesion, or Sabes is the English version of that. And so after we had measured those three curricula, heard and heard presentations from the publishers, we then decided on one and then had a preview of that curriculum at at our schools. And we presented our final recommendation to the instructional materials committee last month.
So we identified early five key areas we wanted to look for in this adoption. We wanted to make sure that English and Spanish standards were in, were aligned for the grade levels. We also wanted to make sure we had authentic texts in Spanish from Spanish-speaking countries and authors. That's one of our challenges with our current materials. It's a lot of translated materials, which it just doesn't quite translate. We wanted to have, like I said, a focus on authentic texts. We wanted to make sure we had a lot of materials so we could differentiate. We have a lot of variety in our bilingual students who need a lot of supports in both Spanish and in English. And we wanted to make sure our materials were culturally relevant in both language and that could build on students' strengths. I also wanted to share that we need materials for dual language to that enhance our dual language content and allocation plan. We are very strategic in dual language. We have to make sure we're teaching Spanish and English every day, but we don't have enough time to do everything in English and everything in Spanish. So we spend a little, we make sure we spread our content out across those languages. And we have really high training and strategies for transfer for our students. Our students know the content. We help them learn two languages to be able to communicate what they know.
So after our curriculum adoption committee heard presentations from the publishers, tested the curriculum in their classrooms, reached out to other districts to get feedback, and then measured, took all that data and measured against our rubric that we wrote last school year. The clear, the the curriculum that had the highest scores on our rubric was Benchmark, Advance, and Adelante. And so that is what we presented to parents at our community night. And we can see here some, this is what Fuerza, our parent's preview night. And at class three schools, we had 40 parents complete recommendation forms, and all of those parents had positive reviews of the curriculum. Some example, parent feedback where I noticed a variety of cultures being represented. The text and illustrations were very clear and appropriate, and the material builds on itself, and this can ease boredom and help students focus. I like the variety of reading books. It gives teachers a lot of choice to serve advanced readers versus not as advanced. I like how the curriculum includes reading, writing, listening, and speaking. And I love that the Spanish is not translated from English to Spanish. Those were our parents that gave feedback in English. We also have Spanish parent feedback that was translated into English for pleasure before. I like the colors and illustrations. They won't really grab the kids' attention. It seems like there is an extensive catalog of books. There's so much for the students to enjoy and so much for them to take home, and it's a great option for both languages of instruction in the 50-50 model. The activities are good because the students can see and learn by the repeated seeing. The materials are interesting, and as a parent, it will be easier to get involved with our children's learning. So from our feedback from the teachers under our curriculum adoption was positive as well. The units start in each grade and and build in rigor as the year progresses. There are both representation of fiction and nonfiction texts, and the texts in Spanish are authentic. As Ms. Hala was saying, it's very important that we see that representation in Spanish, not just as translated texts, but as texts that are actually written by native Spanish speakers in a way that native speakers actually speak. And the Spanish literacy in the Spanish curriculum is taught based on how Spanish works, not a simple translation of how we would teach English and then teach Spanish a la English. And there's videos and songs, not only in English, but also in Spanish, and it includes engaging technology components. So one thing that I personally liked about the curriculum that we chose is the vertical alignment between grades. So in kindergarten, we have, from kindergarten to fifth grade, in the first unit, every grade is learning about animal science. And that, and also that builds on, in rigor as the grades go up.
So we're in the final stages of getting that contract together and looking at what what we're going to pay per year or over a number of years. We're looking at materials in Spanish and in English, both digital and hard copies. And then we're starting to look at planning our professional development and support for teachers. With this recommendation, as when, if we're able to get that, as soon as the company has our our purchase order, we will have asynchronous modules ready for teachers, and we should have materials about four weeks later so they can start digging in, and then we'll have some training before school as well.
May I ask a quick question before you leave? I'm thinking of homework for parents. Would that be material for parents to be able to do homework or assist kids with that?
Yes, there is a family engagement component in the rubric, and it's also in both languages. Absolutely. Good question. This is our first major material that has gone through our instructional materials committee. We've been meeting monthly all year and been looking at some different supplemental materials and novels, but this was our first major instructional material. So Amanda and I did share with our IMC last month our process. We answered questions. A few of our members, one's retired and one is a longtime teacher with us who's been through several major adoptions. And they gave some really good feedback that we had a thorough process, that more parents are getting involved in the process. And the IMC recommended it unanimously to proceed to the board for recommendation.
Perfect.
Any questions?
You guys did a lot of work on that. We appreciate that. Thank you. Diane, any questions?
I don't have a question, but I loved the comment from the parent that they liked it because they could use it with their student at home. And having been a parent with some curriculum that could not be used well by parents at home, I especially appreciate the fact that all of our parents will be able to use that with their students. So thank you for that.
Gabe, any thoughts?
No, great, great job. Thank you.
I do. Is that cost? It seems a little hard to me, but that's out of ignorance. I don't know. Is that cost acceptable, you think? Is that what you expect?
Yeah, well, we're working on them, and everything's expensive. Everything's going up. Everything's going up. So it is hard.
So this, so the cost here, so that's, how many years is that on right now? Is that, is that a three years, five years? What's the?
So it's looking at about $80,000 a year and we're looking at a 10-year.
Okay. Gotcha. Thank you. I was, I'm going back and looking at my budget, making sure Vic has money for us. That was my first question.
Vic is in the loop.
All right. All right. Perfect. Anyway, very good presentation. Thank you both, Hubs.
Thank you. So we would like to recommend that the board accepts this recommendation to adopt Benchmark as presented.
I'd like to, sorry, to move that the board accept recommendation to adopt Benchmark, Advance, Adelante as presented.
Wonderful. Any other questions or comments? If not, I will call for the real call vote, please.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Ms. Sunvic?
Yes.
Mr. Mabry?
Yes.
And Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next up is Policy 2321, Guest Speakers and Assembly. Dr. Pierce will be presenting.
Okay, so we have some policy updates for Policy 2321, along with a procedure and a form to present to the board for approval this evening. So I'll start with the current policy and the recommended updates. So, again, the words that you see in black font are current policy language. And then the additions are in underlined and red. So we do have a current policy, Board Policy on Guest Speakers and Assemblies. Added some verbiage to the first part of the policy to specify that assembly programs, assembly activities are considered part of the instructional and educational program, whether that's a PEP assembly or a, you know, more of a curricular-type assembly. And all, all activities and programs must adhere to board policies. There's also a language here that says, current language that says procedures shall be established for the approval of guest speakers. But it doesn't speak to procedures for the approval of the assembly activities currently. So that's a new addition. And it specifies that all assembly activities and the content of the assembly program shall be reviewed and approved by two administrators prior to the assembly. So that's the overarching policy language that is added to what we have currently. In terms of procedure, there's been an all-new procedure developed because there wasn't one, because the policy didn't specify having a procedure for assemblies, only for guest speakers. And the form we had used for guest speakers really wasn't codified in a formal procedure. So, so now we would have a formal procedure, oh, in form, I'm sorry, I'm on the form. Let me get to the procedure first. Okay, so the procedure then comes along with the form. But the procedure itself is, this is all new language, doesn't exist currently, that when reviewing guest speakers, assembly programs, and assembly activities, principals must consider the following. And there's a number of questions here regarding, is the activity program aligned with the district's instructional program? Is it aligned with other board policies, especially to those pertaining to safety and behavior expectations? Is the content age-appropriate? Does it avoid inhibiting or advancing religion, which is something that the policy currently specifies, right? And then it goes on to say that the authorization form, which I'll show you in just a moment, must be completed. And the approval of two administrators must be obtained prior to the guest speaker, assembly program, and/or assembly activity. Extra little period there that I will take care of. So that's the new procedure. And then the form looks like this. And it provides some directions for the staff member who is planning for the guest speaker or the assembly. And tells them that they must complete this form and present it for administrative approval at least one week in advance of the event or program. So they're asked to provide the name of the guest speaker or assembly, the purpose of the event, and a description of the program. Then they, they sign the form and they present it to administrators for authorization and approval. And so, the form itself again asks the authorizing administrators to consider the questions that are part of the procedure. And then there's a space for two administrators to sign off on approval. And this could be two administrators within the building, or it could be a building administrator and a district administrator. It provides some flexibility on that aspect, but ensures that two administrators would have reviewed the program at least a week in advance and provided authorization. And this is for guest speakers, assembly programs, and assembly activities.
Dr. Pierce, could we, under name of guest speaker or assembly, could we put a heading for date of speaker or event, whatever?
Yes, I can, oops, let me do that right now.
Because that way, it would be clear as to the one week before. Thank you.
Perfect. Any other questions or comments on this? Okay, if not, I will entertain a motion.
I, I motioned to approve Policy 2321. Sorry, it's kind of blurry on my screen. 2321, Guest Speakers and Assemblies. And Procedure 2321.
Sorry, I'll second.
For first, first, and second?
For first and second reading.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I will call for the real call vote, please. Oh, just Gabe?
Yeah, just, just real quick. I appreciate you putting this together, Dr. Pierce, and updating the policy. I think this speaks to, you know, a lot of people in the community. You know, obviously, we're frustrated by some things. And I think this just speaks to us taking action where we can and what we can share. And so, this is just one step in that. But, you know, it's, it's the action and it's the step that we needed to take. And so I appreciate you putting this together so quickly, Dr. Pierce.
Thank you.
Anything else? If not, now we'll do the real vote, please.
Okay, Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Ms. Sunvic?
Yes.
Mr. Mabry?
Yes.
And Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Okay, next is Policy 3560, Students and Student Clubs. Dr. Pierce.
Okay, so the next policy update to present is, is related to recent requests from groups. And this one's a little harder to read, sorry, with all the formatting and so forth, because there's just a lot of formatting changes that also needed to happen. But, so we've heard from lacrosse community recently about wanting lacrosse, you know, to be recognized in our schools. Schools have also had inquiries from other kinds of groups like rowing and equestrian and things like that. So while we, our athletics are really those that are WIAA-approved, after having, you know, discussion about, you know, what is really the underlying interest of wanting to ensure that we're recognizing students for, for some of their accomplishments, what could we do? So we came up with a, what we believe is a happy medium in terms of what, what we can do to meet some of the interests of the groups that we've heard from. So, we have current policy that allows in high schools for curricular clubs and non-curricular clubs. So the only changes you're seeing here are just formatting issues. Because right now, I'm also, Bronson and I are also going through the entire series of 1,000 and 2,000 series policies this year and just making formatting updates and so forth. So I took the opportunity to make those formatting updates on this policy as well, even though it's in the 3,000 series. The substantive change is what I'll highlight right here. And that would be the addition of what we would call high school sports clubs. So these are different from athletics, athletics or WIAA athletics. But this policy change would enable high school, high school sports clubs to form, meaning a student-initiated group that would be authorized and allowed school-building use for meetings, just like non-curricular clubs are. And we, there would not, we would not allow for authorization for the formation of a high school sports club if there's already a sport that's WIA sanctioned. So you could not, we would not authorize schools to have football clubs or baseball clubs or any other sport athletic, excuse me, that already exists within the school. But if the athletic doesn't exist within the school, then students could initiate a process to seek approval for a high school sports club. And a school liaison would be assigned, just like we assign a school liaison for non-curricular clubs when that student-initiated group. I'll just give an example, like a, a, a non-curricular club that operates sort of outside of the school would be like potentially a student Bible club, where they're authorized to do that. It's not connected to the school, but they're able to use a teacher's classroom to meet. The teacher doesn't, the teacher's there for minimal supervision to make sure that, you know, the students are safe and so forth. But it's really a student-led group. So, high school sports clubs would be similar in that way, that the students could initiate the high school sports club and they'd be given the space within the school to meet, to have club-related activities. However, their practice and play would be separate from the club activities. So the policy speaks to that. And let me just kind of get to, to that piece here. So the first part is just kind of in general about what a high school sports club is. And this is all formatting of existing. Then the next substantive part says that the, the club would need to have a minimum of 10 members. And there's a process of seeking authorization for the club, similar to a non-curricular club. And there would be someone assigned, like I said, to, you know, ensure that when the students are meeting to do club-related activities, there was some level of supervision and so forth. Most of this language is the same language that pertains to non-curricular clubs. Where the high school sports club becomes a little bit different is, sorry, my, this mouse is acting up a little bit. It's jumping around. It, it says that, and so I want to direct your attention to part, oh, sorry. We have a jumpy mouse, so it's, it's challenging for me to get to the part where I want. I don't know if we've got a battery that's not working or something. Shoot. Bear with me for just a moment. Apologies. I'm almost there. Okay. Okay, so part five here, where it talks about the use of facilities. So they would, the students in the, having the high school sports club, as I said, would have a space to meet, to do their club activities. But the club practices or games are not school-sponsored or governed by the school. So we would not be, for example, in the, in the example of lacrosse, taking on lacrosse as a school-sponsored activity in terms of the play and practice, because it's just not something that we are able to add to the plates of our athletic directors in our schools. If and when lacrosse becomes WIAA-authorized, then that's different. It would become an athletic and be treated just like any other athletic. But this would allow that the, the play and practice to still happen. They could still use our fields, which they are currently, and I'll get to that part in just a moment. But that part of the activity is not sponsored by the school. It continues to be sponsored by a nonprofit youth sports organization. So as long as the group is affiliated with such an organization, then they could play. And then our schools aren't responsible for, incur any liability for their practices or games. And they may, as it says, request access to fields in accordance with our policy use, our district field use policy. And they would have the same access as current, as other current community youth organizations. So as, as the board knows, we have like youth soccer. Now, they couldn't become a club, because we already have soccer as an athletic. But right now, on the terms of priority for facility use, they're, they're in like the, the second tier after school-sponsored. And so that's where the same tier, for example, lacrosse or any other high school sports club would be. And so they'd be able to access the fields and use the fields. They wouldn't get the same priority as, as district athletics, because what we don't want to do is inadvertently create a situation where now they've got priority over club soccer. We've got lots of community club soccer organizations that access our fields. And we want to make sure that we're treating everybody fairly and equitably in terms of their access. But what this would do for lacrosse is it would have their club affiliation be sponsored by the school. They would be able to have ASV accounts. They would be able to, and we specify it right here in policy, be recognized for their accomplishments and achievements, including those related to practice and play, even though that, that part of it's not under district umbrella. So our intention here was to really listen to the lacrosse community and understand what the interests were and see where we could kind of meet in the middle and, and accomplish some of the interests. We have met with the lacrosse people over a series of months, really. This has taken a while. And, you know, while they would maybe like us to take the whole athletics on, we got really good feedback about what we're doing and what this plan is. I think, you know, they would like to have that priority access to the fields. But we've explained to them that we've got a lot of other community users of our fields. And, and we don't, we don't want to do anything that would upset those groups. So, you can see all, how it's all, you know, written here, but that's the gist of it. And like I said, most of these markings and other areas are simply formatting.
Dr. Pierce, I have a question. And I'm sorry that I don't know the exact letters and numbers there because they're kind of tiny for me. But it, is it correct that you said the district or the building, I guess it was, has to have a staff member in the room with them?
Yeah, and that is, so currently, yes, that is correct. And if, if you, if you look, just to, just to piggyback or just to elaborate on that point a little bit, in current policy, anytime where a student group is meeting, there has to be some level of supervision. We can't just have students meeting in, in rooms without adult supervision. So our current policy in terms of, of, of non-curricular clubs says that, has that same wording, that a staff member has to be assigned to provide minimal that a staff member has to be assigned to provide minimal supervision. So typically, what happens is a student might ask a teacher that, you know, they have a good relationship with, hey, we're forming this, you know, Bible club or something. Can we, can we meet in your room before school? And like, you'll agree to sort of be there and provide that minimal supervision. They're not leading the group. They're not doing anything like that. And so it's the same, the spirit is the same, where we just can't have student groups meeting without some, some minimal level of adult supervision.
Okay, so the reason I ask that is farther down toward the end, it said the district and individual employees, and I'm kind of paraphrasing, would not be liable for any harm done, I guess, to the student or something. And I'm just wondering if that employee is in the room and something happens, are they then liable? Because it says they would not be. It was in red, I believe.
Yeah, I think the part that you're referring to, Diane, is in terms of practice and play. So we're really bifurcating the club activities, where a group of students might be meeting before school to talk about lacrosse, for example, or ultimate frisbee or something, right? Versus when they're playing and practicing. So when they're playing and practicing, it's not our event.
Right.
And we wouldn't have any liability.
Okay, thanks. I just couldn't read all of that very clearly.
No, I know.
So I wanted to make sure. No, it's, it's fine.
Good question.
Any other questions? Yes, Ron?
I do have two. Uniforms clearly state Southridge are the other schools. Is there any liability wearing a uniform that clearly states that they're representing, well, it looks like they're representing Southridge, for example.
Yeah, I mean, that, that is a real issue. And it's, it's, there's a long history, not only in this community, but in other communities, where community groups will take on the, the, you know, names and mascots of their neighboring high schools. And it can be confusing to people when there's a junior or a mini whatever, you know, football thing, and they're not really connected to the school, but they're using our names and mascots. So we, we wouldn't prohibit them from doing that, because it really happens in lots of other places, too. But it does, I will acknowledge, it does make it challenging for us to help people understand, well, I know that they're practicing and their uniforms say this, but this is not a school-sponsored. But you're pointing out something that's a real thing.
And going on, Diane?
Ron, I was going to piggyback onto yours. So when our district coaches go with whatever said athletic team or group, you know, our employees make sure that our students who are wearing, you know, whatever school's uniform behave in a way that hopefully, you know, reflects well on the district. And so to Ron's point, if I wear a uniform that says, you know, Kamaikan lacrosse or whatever, and something inappropriate or unfortunate happens, then what happens?
It, it just requires us to be clear when, if somebody complains about that, that this is not a, a, a team that is affiliated with the school in terms of when they're practicing and playing. I know it's a hard, you know, line to try to explain to people. If, if we, if we wanted to go the route of saying, you can't use our name and likeness, I think we would, I would need to get some input from Bronson, because it's pretty pervasive, not just with lacrosse, but with little junior football teams and things out in the community. It's just, it's just going to be difficult to potentially rein in if we wanted to do that.
And I was not calling out lacrosse in any way.
Right, right.
I just used that as an unfortunate example. I'm over on the west side right now. And last year, there was a situation at a district over here where something really not good happened with a club team. And people don't always complain, but word of mouth happens. And there was some very unfortunate issues between the district and the club. And there were legal issues. And I just want to make sure that, you know, that whoever wears those, they are our students, and they do go to our schools, and they do represent our schools. And, and I want them to do all those things. And I think all of these clubs are great. I just want to make sure that we pass that information along to the adults and to the students in the club, that, you know, we, we want you to do this, but we really want you to be great representatives of our schools and our district also. And I'm sure the adults obviously are, will. But I just think it's important to make sure that that's maybe a written statement somewhere.
I think that's good.
And, Dr. Pierce, correct me if I'm wrong. So basically, if it, if it's a WIA sanctioned school sport, they're affiliated with the district. If it's not, they're technically not affiliated with the school district, correct? Is that an easy way to?
Yes, and this maybe blurs that a little bit or maybe adds to the confusion by having high school sports clubs. So just to kind of reiterate, if, if it's a WIA athletic that we have in our school, then it's our, our coaches, our athletic trainers, our athletic directors, our students, our liability, all of that. Right now, we don't, you know, we, we, there are no sports in our schools that have any affiliation with us that aren't WIA. We do allow community groups who have sports teams to access and use our fields. By creating high, high school sports clubs, we're not saying you're not an athletic, so it's different. We're kind of differentiating athletics and sports. We're authorizing the club to form to do club-related activities and meetings, but not authorizing practice and play as being part of a district program. Practice and play of the sports club is still the community-sponsored part, but their club activities, which allows us to, you know, be clear that, yes, they can use the intercom and that, just like any other student club and, and, and communicate within the school. And we can be recognizing those students for their accomplishments. So I, I hope that makes sense.
Yeah, I just wanted, I just, I just want to make it clear that these, the clubs and some of these things, especially like junior Suns, junior Braves, and like the football and some of these things, I just want to make it clear that we, we don't hire those coaches. They're, they don't work for the school district. That, that's their own thing. And so though they're wearing our, you know, kind of our names on their jerseys, we, we don't have anything to do with hiring staff or coaches or anything like that for these, these, some of these clubs.
That's, that's correct. And if the board authorizes high school sports clubs, and I'll just use lacrosse, because we would not, we would continue to not be hiring their coaches or supervising their play or practice. But, but by doing this, we would allow ourselves to do some things, like recognize them and allow the club meetings to happen in schools.
Can that be captured in the disclaimer? Establishing the program, the club, with the adults to help establish a club? Just add that as a disclaimer on whatever paperwork it is. I'm asking, is that possible?
Yeah, I, I think it is, because this, the policy, there is a form in existence for non-curricular clubs. And the proposed policy change talks about a form that has to be submitted for a high school sports club. I have not, we have not like worked to create the form, because wanted to, you to have the opportunity to approve or not approve the policy first. But I think we could, as a part of that form and paperwork, make a lot of these things clear.
Ron, I didn't exactly hear everything you said. Would it be possible to make a disclaimer? And then I didn't hear for what?
Just to add a disclaimer to the documents that we established for the establishment of the club.
Thank you, yeah, I would agree. That's a good idea.
Okay, sorry, Mike, right. One more thing. We've been presented from athletes saying, hey, can I get credit for this PE class? You know, because I'm, I'm in sports. That would not apply here, because this is not a sanctioned sport. Is that fair to say?
That's a really good question. And one of the things that we're, that we've been looking at is all of our PE policy wording, because really what the law says is directed athletics. If a student has participated in directed athletics, then they can seek to be excused from participating in school PE, complete our assessments, right, and earn credit. So directed athletics, we have, you know, continued work to do in terms of processing and helping every, ensure that there's common understanding of that. But directed athletics doesn't necessarily have to mean school athletics. It can't just mean I'm going to work out at the gym or something. But if I'm part of a...
Karate class.
Right, or ballet, whatever. And it's, I can, you know, get pre-approval for that, and it's under the direction of an adult, and I'm, you know, it's, it's a legitimate directed athletic, then... So this could potentially fit into that, yeah.
Good, 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 okay.
Any other questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve policy 3560, student clubs.
Second.
For first and second?
For first and second reading.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? If not, I will call for the roll call vote, please.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Ms. Sunbick?
Yes.
Mr. Mabry?
Yes.
And Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to try and end our marathon meeting here. So next meeting agenda, we have the preliminary budget, 2324. Oh, August, oh, I'm sorry. All right, August board meeting changed. See, I'm trying to get out of here.
This will be very quick. Just as a reminder, for July and August board meetings, in July, we, the board has one meeting. It's remote for all board members. And we do consent items only, so it's a very quick meeting. Then we've got one regular business meeting in August. The current date for that meeting is August 23rd. Like to propose moving that date to August 16th, so it's not during Fair Week. And there's also three weeks versus four weeks between the July and the August meeting. And then, of course, we'd be back to regular meeting calendar in September, and you guys will see that and talk about it at the board retreat. And then that gets approved formally at the last meeting in June. So essentially, the proposal is to move the current August meeting date from August 23rd to August 16th.
Perfect, we need to make a motion for that, or?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion as stated.
Second?
Second.
Perfect. No other questions or comments? I'll call for the roll call vote, please.
Which one is, which one seconded?
Give it to Diane, please.
Okay, Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
And Ms. Sunbick?
Yes.
Mr. Mabry?
Yes.
And Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other sayings, Pam? All right, next meeting agenda is the preliminary budget, 2324, K through 12 student growth and proficiency targets, elementary boundary recommendation, as amended. And the Southridge High School gym naming recommendation. Anything else?
I have a question about the boundary. Do we want to change that to discussion rather than recommendation? Because we'll be looking at feedback? Because we'll...
I think we talked about actually trying to make a recommendation here.
So we'll discuss and then make the recommendation? That's fine.
Do we need to make room for graduation? What do you call it? Challenges?
Yes, I, I was going to communicate to the board about this this week and propose some time to make sure that gets carved out of calendars in case there's any appeals that need to be heard. And we typically, at least last year, had done those between, either right before ceremonies or between ceremonies. So I'll, I'll get those out to you. And also, as you saw, I sent out the information about graduations, making sure we know which board members are going to attend which ones and so forth. So hearing back from you, so that's great.
Dr. Pierce, I have a question about the appeals. And I know some of them only come right before the graduation due to circumstances. But if possible, and I, I understand the time constraints, but if possible, could we do some beforehand, not in between? Because we got really stretched there last year.
Yes, I'll, you're right.
And I know that wasn't your fault.
Last-minute ones that we have to do, but we'll try to get it. Hopefully, we won't have any, no?
That would be wonderful.
Yeah.
Next meeting date, did you say the date?
Next meeting day is the 24th. Okay, if nothing else, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much.
Good night.
Good night, thank you.
Good night.